I need to get back into it. No more.
Yes, I don't know. I checked FA from everyone.
Sorry, no more.
No more FA from me. Which is a county. I'm sure.
You had a good time. You're just in Italy?
I was. Yeah.
Part did you go?
That's two years. But I'm just kidding.
Which part did you go? Oh, okay. Yeah.
A little bit closer. Okay, so, good afternoon. Again, I apologize for my absence last work session, but I have been brought up to speed and I realize that you all have been able to address about eight of the items that are in the letter dated April 21st from Councilmember Lightsey, and that we have about five more to remain to discuss today. And so hopefully, we can get through that so that we can then move forward and to the next step with regards to the UDC amendment. So I believe you all have the letter attached, and so I believe you all left off with the one that starts with A clustering. And so I'm going to use the same format that Robert used where we paraphrase the letter by ordinance section and then discuss the concerns and any possible edits.
Could you give the number to figure out where you are in the document?
What page were on?
Oh, yes, absolutely. So the First Amendment's in reference to clustering, which is Page 16, subsection 6A, and the definition cited in the proposed UDC amendment. The letter requests clarity regarding the comprehensive plan directives on clustering. So I'll actually read this aloud again, Page 16, A clustering 1. Development within each hamlet or village district must be clustered as specified in this subsection to promote walking, minimize the fragmentation of open space, and support the comprehensive plan. So I believe the question really is intent to the comprehensive plan directives on clustering. And so it's really common practice to reference the comprehensive plan in a regulatory code. And if you were to do so, you would see that there are actually eight citations where clustering is referenced. And I actually think it's really beneficial when bringing up a term like clustering to go ahead and provide two of those citations. It's to promote walking and it's to minimize the fragmentation of open space. But we actually want someone to open up your comprehensive plan and really get a better understanding of why clustering is so important to your vision and to maybe even learn more about the design principles with regards to compact traditional development, nodal development. But again, there are eight additional citations, so I can add to that list if that's desirable.
Just saying, just saying consistent with the comprehensive plan, it doesn't provide enough guidance. But in this case, you go to the village description and Hamilton description, and there's clustering requirements there. So I think it's helpful to reference, give some kind of guide to what part of the comprehensive plan you're talking about.
Okay, so the actual section of the comprehensive plan. Sure.
And that's more of a general comment because I think you've got it covered here.
Okay.
So Shannon, you were asking us to, for ideas around defining clustering in more detail? Is that over time?
Actually, the letter was simply asking what was intended with, when it was mentioning to support the comprehensive plan. So I wasn't actually.
She's talking about this comment here because it just says comprehensive plan without saying what part of the comprehensive plan. So I was asking for more.
Oh, okay, I see.
Reference to a section or a definition or something.
Okay.
And it's the right back, the passenger back.
Which seems appropriate, right? Like to call out a reference?
Sure, I can reference what Commissioner Cloud mentioned. Not a problem. Anything else on that section? Okay, the second half of that is with regards to the letter, with its regards to some alternative ratios of commercial service area within a hamlet. It's mentioning about a hamlet tops out at 20 square feet. It should be revised from 5% to 2%. And Councilman Lightsey, can you just enlighten me on that a little bit?
You know, part of the problem here, of course, is that, is that I was told to submit this for, in, at the meeting so that we would go back and forth and then bring it back to council. So, so this is a compilation of notes that I, I was told we would go through and then, and then it switched to, well, we're not going to go through it. We're going to wait and do it as a textual response in council, which I appreciate, but I don't have all my notes together. But it's, but I, I take this kind of math back to the kind of math in, in the, in Section 5, viability and impact of residential hamlets, where the, you know, as, as I pointed out, the logic of the, you know, study, the reviewed current success of Grange section ends with a recommendation that then doesn't follow its own logic. And we went over that during the last month's meeting.
Oh.
And Robert tried to clarify that. And, you know, on the basis of, you know, whatever math. And, and this, this calculation just came out of, out of my various notes on what that appeared to be doing. So, so maybe you could just speak to the, this, I'm sorry. Just whistle or something and I'll try and do better. I'm sorry. But, but, so, maybe you could just speak to your calculations and how you arrived at that based on what's on the ground here.
How I arrived at which number?
The 5%, 2%, 20 square feet. I think we're talking about that whole concept of what the minimum and maximum non-res.
What's actually written, the 20 square feet? Because that's actually not what's in the code. So that's why I just was asking for clarification. So if you go to Page 8, which is at the top of your UDC amendment.
Hold on a second.
A hamlet has a minimum non-residential of 40 square feet and is a maximum of 25% of the developable area. So is that the one you want me to explain? Which we're actually not changing, but I can explain it.
No, no, that's, okay. I'm, I'm lost in my own notes here. But the, but, I'm thinking that I arrived at that based on trying to work on your calculation of the size of Grange versus the more realistic calculation of the entirety of Saranby as a commercial entity in its totality and arriving at the, at a calculation based on that. And, and Robert had said that they were essentially just elected to keep it at 250 acres.
Yes, really in reference to the standard 10-minute quarter-mile walk shed.
I'm sorry, say that again?
In reference to the 10-minute quarter-mile walk shed.
So you're saying that was based upon the idea that you need to be able to walk to it within 10 minutes?
Of the non-residential, of the actual non-residential piece.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that has continued to happen, but that's the rationale for the 250 acres. And, you know, there was another rationale as well with Y250 and not larger. Because again, the hamlet size is your number one way to preserve 70% of the land. So if you start to increase that beyond 250 substantially, especially.
As a minimum.
As a minimum, then you start to push landowners with smaller acreage to not really provide the overall city with more preservation. You're actually limiting the ability to preserve larger tracts of land.
Okay.
And then everyone starts to break their land into farmettes.
Right. Kind of like Hamilton Road. They divided that one up into 10, 12-acre lots. Supposed to be a farmette.
I don't, that's not what I'm discussing. I'm discussing.
I know, I was just.
Well, no, and Hamilton Road was done under the zoning that was in place at the time when we had that 3369 stuff.
Yeah, I wasn't privy to that.
That was done under zoning. That was.
Do you think, Shannon, you know, I get, you're getting your information from, I guess, this body overall. I would be willing to, to bet that if we actually talked to the citizens that live here, they would think that 250 was very, very small. Because, you know, that, just like what's going on right now with this whole RICO development. I mean, you've seen the last six, seven years, what's been going on, what's being pushed. That's not what the people want. So my thing is, may, maybe we need to back up and have a public meeting about that to see if, if, if overall, if we think that is too small with 500-foot restriction in between each of these developments. Because I don't think that this body right here has listened to the public enough.
Oh, my gosh.
To be able to make that decision.
Well, I think that's your prerogative to do that.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Nobody, Richie, just, nobody's pushing anything. We are getting applications and reviewing them.
It's not.
We're not, what do you, I don't understand that comment.
And your current code is 200, 200 acres.
And, and what's more, that number came from public process in our comp plan updates. That's not something that was made up in the city council. That was something that came through those public processes. It's the whole point. So, you know, we've talked about, let's remember what we're doing here. We had a comp plan update a few years ago. When you have a comp plan update that proposes things that are slightly different from what's in your current comp plan, you have a requirement then to update your zoning. That's the process that we're in right now. So this is the, from the last comp plan, there were some recommendations. Go through the consultants to figure out how to implement those recommendations. They come to council, we vote on them, right? And that came from a public process, just like the zoning that's in place that we're talking about updating came from a public process from the comp plan before it.
And I hear you loud and clear.
Just like, just like the one came from a public process before that. So again, to say that citizens, I mean, I get it, there are some people that feel differently today. I get that. And we're getting ready to go into comp plan process. And if that presumes different policies than the ones the last three comp plan processes have given us, we'll be going through this process again afterwards to change the zoning to match that. But right now, our oath is to obey the law of the day, and that's our current comp plan, and that's what this is about.
So maybe I'm a little confused on this. So then on Page 16, where we're changing the hamlet mixed use from 200 to 250, that's not part of the comp plan. So we're doing that outside of the comp plan, right?
No, it's, it's one, I mean, again, it's one of those conversations. Comp plan says a lot of things, right? We'll have to look at the, I know, I have the comp plan in front of me, so.
Aren't we having, aren't we having this conversation, right? Sorry, Lori, we're kind of having this conversation right now because things have changed. What I'm simply stating is, I truly believe in our community, it probably about a 70%, it has changed. And I think at this particular point, we need to go back and really talk to our community about what's fixing to take place if you pass a couple of permits and don't do some accounting. And, but we all know that. So, you know, there's a lot more on the table right now, and that's all I'm saying. You're right, Mr. Mayor, when things change, they deserve a discussion. So that, that's all I'm saying.
But we have comp plan updates regularly. We agree.
Then we should move it. Move on. Touch any of this, fill the comp plan. That's what you're saying.
I'm saying that this conversation came from the last comp plan, but yes, I.
My conversation's coming from the people.
What's interesting, I also talk to people.
Right. I think we have one person that likes to talk a lot, and his opinions, I mean, he's one-fifth of who's up here. But you hear, there's other people up here. That's his opinion. I don't feel the same he does. I do not feel the same way as he does about public opinion, et cetera. We agree, disagree on a lot of things. So your job is to kind of get all this input and give them what it's worth as we move forward to put this together in a better way. So don't let one person get us sidetracked.
So, so I appreciate that, Councilman Pete. Because it's a good reminder, one second.
Sure.
Lori.
I think I was mistaken, that it was 250 and 500 was the last change.
That's exactly what I was about to say. But it actually, in our current UDC, it's 200. And Councilmember Schmidt had asked that we propose 250, or another number, excuse me, another number, and do an analysis. We did that analysis and came up with 250. But any, any councilman here is able to write an amendment at any time during the vote with an ulterior, ulterior or different number altogether. So I just wanted to remind everyone that you're actually not being quieted, that you have an opportunity, and we can actually help you draft that amendment.
Yeah, I realize it. Thanks.
So definitely, go ahead.
Just on the, just listening, listening to this, I just thought it might be helpful, since we have the experts here, if you could clarify, Tom just said, the comp plan, he referred to it as the law of the day. But I'm not sure, I, I, I think maybe it would help if you just kind of gave us a kind of sketch account of what is the relationship between the comp plan, which we saw often look to, and sort of legislatively, what is the relationship between the comp plan and the specifics in the zoning, just so that everybody listening knows.
Okay. So, and we can actually draft an actual primer on this, if that would be helpful for the next time. But in very quick summary, your comprehensive plan is your guiding document. Every locality must draft a comprehensive plan. There are actually a number of sections that they must include. There's public process that they must include. And all of this is in the Department of Community Affairs website, as well as the Atlanta Regional Commission, if you actually want to see all the parameters that are needed in a comprehensive plan. From that comprehensive plan, the locality is then required to draft a regulatory code that ensures that there is compatibility with the comprehensive plan. So if the comprehensive plan says one number, that number needs to also be shown in the regulatory language, unless there has been some opportunity where there needs to be a change, and that can occur. So I'm not saying changes to regulatory code can't happen, just like they can happen with the comprehensive plan after, you know, actual public involvement. So you can have changes, but one document is the legislative side, like you said, and the other is your guiding vision. And also gets to services, population, demographics. It looks at both the past and the future.
And so as we go through and make these changes, how binding is the comp plan on legislation? I guess is my question.
I've always thought it as being quite binding, because you need to be, that is your vision, that's your goal, that's what you're trying to achieve. So if any landowner, any applicant can prove that you're going against your comprehensive plan and you're actually not meeting your vision, then there can be an issue with that.
Okay.
Because again, we're a property rights state. So you have property rights, and what you want to do on your property, it needs to be coherent with a comprehensive plan.
The, the way that I've had several of the attorneys that have advised us over the course of the last 20 years, talk about it, is the closer that your written zoning is to what it says in your comp plan, the more strength your written zoning has, the more enforceable it is, the more, or weight it has. Now, you know, there are things in the comp plan that are talked about in kind of descriptive terms that don't necessarily have numbers attached to them. And so use experts to come up with numbers that best align with the descriptive terms that you use in the comp plan. But it's important that they match.
Right.
Well, thank you. I just thought that'd be useful since we have lots of people paying attention.
Absolutely. Like I said, we can develop that if that's helpful, Mike, to put on your website even. I think you might even have something similar about a comprehensive plan and how it works with regulatory language. Okay, well, we can, if that would be helpful.
PCA does have some good stuff, too.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to 2E, Page 18. This next item expresses a concern for acquisition of land across from a thoroughfare, including potential traffic issues which may ensue. And so there may be some confusion on this one, so I'm going to try to see if I can clarify. So what 2E is actually discussing is when you have one property, one development, one applicant going for rezoning, and there happens to be a thoroughfare dividing that property. We actually do still believe that that's a case-by-case basis, very unique situation, many variables, many variations. And so we do want council and commission to review it at that time and draft conditions for that property. But when I read your letter, I'm wondering if you're actually discussing a different situation. How I read your letter, it seems to be talking about, there's a development, it's already been rezoned, there's probably development on it, and then across a thoroughfare, there's now a new acquisition, perhaps a new phase.
Well, yeah, I was, so, I mean, what got me in mind of this is that, for example, there was, there was a lot of question about the acquisition of property by Saranby that went across Hudson Ferry Road.
Okay.
And then that property shares a boundary with this property, which itself then crosses RICO Road. And I, and with all of the concern that the city holds about, about trails and interconnectivity and all of that stuff, it started to strike me that, that eventually you, you would end up with a situ, a situation where the unanticipated consequence is lots of crossing of thoroughfares by, for example, golf carts, which is the current concern. And so, so I just had, had it in mind that, obviously not, that, you know, for, it was argued during the, the Hudson Ferry acquisition that the addition of.
Wow.
A few, lost my train of thought there, went right into the ether. Hutch, during that, it was, it was noted that that is a small number of residences proposed for that property. And so the cross Hudson Ferry traffic would be relatively controlled. But if that were then to get a 274 unit hamlet on the far side of it, and people started taking their golf carts through that across Hudson Ferry, suddenly we got a nightmare that we didn't anticipate. And so it was that kind of thinking that had me questioning that.
Okay, so that, I appreciate that clarity because, first off, I wasn't privy to the Hudson Ferry, but that's a different situation altogether than what 2E is. So just so we're clear, 2E is a very different situation, and we feel that that should stay case-by-case. Your situation, I would simply just default to, that has to go through rezoning anyway, and it has to go through your entire rezoning process. So I would think at that time, the code is already doing what a code does, and you all should draft conditions that discuss that unique opportunity with acquisitions and phases across a road. So you'll, you'll do traffic studies, you'll do what a council would ask to do. So 2E, though, is addressing a different situation. But I, we can also try.
And you can craft whatever specific conditions mitigate the problems that you're concerned about.
Absolutely. But, but your condition to me seems like a, well, it's going to go through rezoning, and we acquired it, and so now we're drafting conditions and doing traffic studies. So that's just, it's just not the same conditions, all I'm saying. This is a different condition.
Just on a related note, you know, there's traffic studies, and then there's golf carts, which don't get.
Again, how do you all handle that? And when there is, how was that handled? Apparently, it wasn't handled in a way that you're, you think was satisfactory.
No, I mean, it's, sorry, in that instance, it was fine, the, the, I just. We're going to have more and more.
But that's, that is an issue because golf carts weren't really something that were addressed in the original comp plans because it wasn't really so evident that you were going to have so many of them, right?
So that's a great point. So now we're talking about golf cart movement.
To Tom's point.
Which weren't, which isn't in here.
Anything in our codes about golf carts. I don't really find anything.
Yeah, there isn't.
And so I was.
So that's why I'm like, that's such a different situation than what 2E is trying to solve.
Right now, they're not allowed on city streets.
But it is, it's something, too. We've, we've brought the golf cart issue up several times here, talked about maybe looking at model codes from other places. But it also feels like, because of the way that these inwardly focused developments that are all we allow tend to have golf carts in them, that it's a comp plan kind of issue to talk about how those work between nodes or whatever.
Yeah.
Shannon, so in reading this, it sort of reminds me of the thing we just discussed, and that's the walkability within 10 minutes. So when you, we allow a hamlet to have any limited number of units across from the main hamlet, can they still walk to the civic center within 10 minutes?
I think you all would decide a number of conditions that you would want to see in that specific master plan. I think every site will just be so different. How much land is on one side of the thoroughfare versus the other? Are there any natural limitations that throw all of the non-res on one side? Do you want the non-res on both sides? I think that's on such a unique situation, needs to be case-by-case.
But it also informs the recommendations you're making in here about clustering.
Yeah.
Right, the recognition that you can have some that maybe are too far away, but it's such a small number, it's not that impactful. Most of them have to be with whatever, right?
Again, it depends on how much of land percentage is on one side of your thoroughfare and the other. And so there's just so many variables that this code needs to just, and it's such a unique situation, we need to let you all draft those.
That would be very few. That would just be the, the ones that would come up around a thoroughfare. Other than that, you're just.
That's what 2E is addressing.
Correct. I'm saying, other than that, we're still at 500 feet in between development, wherever we want to be.
Again, that's not what 2E is.
I understand. I'm just making sure, I'm separating the two in my mind.
I see.
Make sure we're clear.
There's no, there's no space limitation between mixed-use hamlets and the zoning.
Yeah.
Just to be clear.
Good, okay. The next item is Page 26, subsection 7C. It provides a suggestion that setbacks on four non-residential uses be applied to all adjacent properties, as well as the setback increased in some instances. There is also a reference to the increased setbacks' ability to mitigate a dark sky violation. Okay, so just some clarity here. So setbacks are generally a mechanism used to protect a lessly intense use from any nuisances from a more intense use. So in this case, we're trying to protect the residential property from any nuisances that could happen based on the four uses in your chart, which are event center large, airport private, motion picture, sound recording facility, and an RV park. So it's not general to ask that there be setbacks between uses of equal intensity. So you don't typically ask for a setback between a non-residential and a non-residential. But that being said, all four of these uses require a special use permit. So if the council deems that that setback does need to exist, or that you need it to be more than 200 feet, you all have the opportunity to do that at that time. Okay.
That's the whole point of special use permits, so you have a lot of opportunity to fine tune.
Okay. The final item is subsection 8A, Page 30, and this does have several parts. The letter states an opposition to multifamily development and expresses concern about the inclusion of such development within the city, as well as the reasoning behind the proposed net density language, which incentivizes a variety of housing types in exchange for external land preservation. All right, so let's break this one down. First, the opposition to multifamily development may exist, but you all are, it is your duty as the council and commission to provide multifamily development within the borders of your city. As a matter of fact, your comprehensive plan on Page 20 states, and I quote, "There's a need for incentivizing development models and to address the lack of attainable housing in both the rental and ownership markets." So again, it's important that you all, as a council and commission, provide that multifamily option. And I also want to note that it's already incentivized in your unit equivalency table that's also on that same page, and we're not making any revisions to that. So the letter asks, well, then why would you develop the block net density option? Well, there's really two reasons. So first, if the developer chooses the block net density option, then what you're doing is you're incentivizing that variety of units, that lifecycle housing variety, at a block-by-block level. And so just think of live-work units that are next to townhomes. And so now you've got residences of different ages.
We live right.
Like a live-work unit next to a townhome on the same block.
I got it.
So what you're starting to do is you're starting to allow residents of different ages to really live amongst one another. And so, yes, your unit equivalency table already incentivizes a variety of housing units, but that does so at the development level. If the developer chooses this one, we're now incentivizing it at the block level. So we're just truly trying to incentivize better community design. So that's the first reason. But the second reason really gets to the heart of why we would ever draft this option to begin with, and it's the fact that if a developer chooses this option, then they have to preserve land external to the site for a minimum of 50% of the units. And that's to address your TDR DTC program, which we have heard has, is struggling. And so this now becomes a demand generator for your TDR and DTC program.
Could you say that again? So at the block level, then they have to preserve outside the development?
Yep, so if they do more than one unit.
Second page.
Then, and, yes, oh, thank you, I'm sorry.
Page 31.
It's actually in the chart.
The bottom.
It's on Page 31. At the top of the page, it's the little letter B. To qualify for a density equivalent less than one, at least 50% of the density units applied must come from DTCs or externally sourced DRS.
Because again, until there is a village zoned in Chattahoochee Hills, we have no demand driver for.
Correct.
DDRs. And that was one of the good proquos, right?
Yeah.
Payment of non-developing landowners to preserve their land. This is a mechanism that helped make some of that up.
Okay. That was helpful.
Sure, good.
Y'all were here to walk us through.
Good.
Your opinions on this.
So what's next?
So, we are available, if anyone would like us to draft any amendments to what is in the UDC. And so we can do that so that when you all, you read amendments at the time of the vote, is that correct?
We would, yep.
Yep, so, other than that, I would think that you all are ready for a first read.
And that's it. Let's compile this for a first read.
Yep.
And again, if anybody wants to look at something else, they can.
I believe you might have had an amendment you wanted, Councilman, and, and Councilman Schmidt might as well. So if you reach out to me, we can draft. So if you reach out to me, we can draft that for you.
Okay.
Happy to.
Can we get a the your, you know, my my kind of scrawled notes here that you're responding to? Can I get a copy? Can we all get copies of your written response to these?
Sure.
Thanks.
Sure. They'll be bulleted, so I hope that's okay.
I mean, this is just my notes that I thought it was just you and me going back and forth, so.
Well, no, I really think this needed a larger conversation because I don't think everyone had.
Oh, that's fine.
Was perfectly clear on all of it either.
So but but if we could get your written response, that would be helpful to fully understand everything before the first read.
Do you want me to add in there conversation of amendments and what you all discussed at the other?
Get some items from last.
Yeah.
We'll have the we'll have those.
I'll just include those. I think you all talked about some administrative changes. And so I'll just add that in there. So you have it.
Thanks.
And so it'll be distributed to the council and commission.
Good.
Good.
I mean, again, this was at the council's request, happy to.
Yes, I mean, it's clarified a lot.
Good.
Having having the most complete version of all the information sounds helpful. I think everybody likes this formatting or making changes with the rationale attached to it. So thank you for leading that.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, that being able to go through them like this, I think. I mean, for those of us who don't do this for a living, it's enormously clarifying to have a legislative record that we can really walk through and be walked through, I think, so.
Cool.
It's fine.
All right. Well, that was faster than I thought. Let's go to our agenda review. And thank you very much for the planning commission. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Participating with us. First item is the review of the agenda itself. And let me get to the agenda itself. So all the normal things at the beginning, we're going to have a proclamation for Nan McGuffey as she's retiring from the library. Normal staff reports. And then we have the rezoning for what is colloquial called the RICO hamlet. And I'm waiting for Mike to get there. No, you're good, you're good. I just. I know we're moving from thing to thing.
They were talking about there was another change in condition. It will work on patients.
Not that.
So give us a quick update of where we stand from your perspective.
Right, so we've had a number of discussions in both planning commission and city council of this application. We finally were able to receive the traffic study we'd been waiting for. And so put it back on the agenda. The planning commission held a hearing last month in their regular meeting.
You pause for a second, I guess.
Yep.
We'll keep. Yeah, you go ahead. We'll wait for you to get back.
Yeah, we can.
Everybody needs to take a break. Now's a good time.
Can I ask for recess?
Or recessed for a moment. No, that's that's fine, that's fine. Good, come back into the meeting. So where were we, Mike?
So the proposal is back on the agenda after being off for a couple of months in in city council. We received the the traffic study from the applicant. And so I can run through the basics of the proposal. I don't know if everyone's tired of hearing the basics after all this time. 273.89 acres on RICO Road at Vernon Grove Road. About 244 of those acres lie on the south side of RICO Road, about 30 acres on the north side. There are about 5,000 feet total of road frontage on Vernon Grove Road, RICO Road on the south, RICO Road on the north. The plan shows one main entrance on the south side of RICO Road, an entrance on the north side of RICO Road serving the smaller piece of property, and then one entrance on Vernon Grove Road, which is not a paved road. There's a condition in here that would, if adopted, limit the use of that Vernon Grove Road entrance to emergency vehicles only, in addition to bike head sort of uses. So it would still be available for emergency use. If adopted, it would create more than 191 acres of open space and civic space, protect those 5,000 feet of road frontage. The proposal is for 274 residential units, most of them detached, single family and attached townhomes, and a small number of multifamily, which the applicant has said is just would be limited to above the non-residential uses. For the non-residential uses, they had ideas like maybe professional offices, some sort of food service, and maybe a clothing store, that sort of that that sort of thing. Planning Commission held a public hearing, one of many, this last at last month's meeting, and voted two to four to not to recommend approval. We should run through the conditions. I handed out some conditions that planning commission had discussed. There are some others that have changed since last time I sent conditions to you all. If you look at the conditions, those changes are all noted in red. I'll start, if you'd like, to run through those those proposed changes. Number six, traffic and entrances. It used to give vague reference to the forthcoming traffic study. And now it's it's a specific reference to the recommendations in the study, basically. And just says that the applicant is is responsible for paying for those entrance improvements that the study recommends. And it identifies when the deceleration deceleration lane and left turn lane would have to be built. That's before the final plat is issued that includes the 100th residential lot. So they could go ahead and plat 99 lots as written. They could plat 99 lots before building that entrance. That number can be changed if if you all deem appropriate. It also says that they'll make the right of way available if necessary, if it's necessary to have additional right of way for any of those, any of those entrances. Then on page three of the conditions, number 11, there's new language at the end. That's where it addresses the limitation on the Vernon Grove Road entrance. Says the property owner shall place at their own expense a locked gate or bollards with an oxbow box for emergency access at Vernon Grove Road entrance. You all probably already know, but an oxbow box is what the fire department uses to gain access. So the brand new conditions that were not on the original set of conditions. Number 12, uses on the north side of RICO Road shall be limited to open space, civic space, and single family detached residential lots. And the number of residential lots north of RICO Road shall be limited to no more than 20. This was one of the things that you see changed on the set of three that I handed out, that top one. What they discussed was a reduction to zero lots north of RICO Road. So it would eliminate everything after the word civic space, basically, in that first sentence there on on page 12. So eliminating single family residential lots and how many lots. Staff recommendation was okay with 20, would be happy with some number below 20. I don't know that going down to zero is is necessary, but that's that's certainly your call. Number 13, the owner will at their sole expense construct a fence at the eastern and western property boundaries on the south side of RICO Road to provide protection for and from the adjacent livestock operations. That came from some of the public comment from some of those neighboring property owners. 14, the owner will at their sole expense replant the open portions of the district buffer with native plant materials to provide an effective four season screen of the development from the public thoroughfares. You probably know there's an opening there along RICO Road. That sort of screening is required in the code, but this addresses it directly. Number 16, multifamily unit shall be limited to upper floors of buildings, housing, commercial, or non-residential uses. This is what I described a few minutes ago when I talked about their proposed multifamily uses. The two additional proposed new conditions were number 17, when the first preliminary, with the first preliminary plat application, the applicant shall submit an evaluation of the site distances at the hamlet entrances and a justification for the location of the main entrance, considering site distances and the location of the Hopkins Road intersection. This is normally normally a part of the engineering review. Site distances are provided by the applicant's engineers, reviewed by the city's engineers. This would move that review up to the preliminary plat phase rather than at the land disturbance permit phase. And then proposed new condition number 18, prior to approval of the first preliminary plat, the applicant shall hire a qualified consultant or engineer to determine the presence or absence of endangered or threatened species on the site. The report shall be submitted with the preliminary plat application. So that's a that's a more formal study than than what they've already, but the statement that they've already provided. The other condition that was addressed in the planning commission was there were some planning commission members who thought that concept plan approval shouldn't be tied to the rezoning at this point. I think when they walked in, they maybe were unaware that that was a procedurally an okay, we have specific language that says it's okay procedurally. Some were concerned that it hadn't appeared as a separate item on the agenda, thinking too of the gas station proposal, which did appear had two two separate items. But we do have specific language in the in the zoning that says that when site plan meets the requirements for a concept plan, it can be approved as a part of the rezoning action. And that's addressed in the conditions. And so if you didn't want to, if you wanted to approve the rezoning but did not want to approve the concept plan, you could eliminate that condition as the the planning commission was considering. The applicant would like to have a concept plan approval as a part of the overall approval, should should you vote that way.
There was a failed motion amendment, right? A failed amendment motion that had that language in it.
That's right. That's right, yeah.
To to separate the two.
That's right. And so that's it as far as conditions. We have the applicant here. The property owner is here. And I believe they have on Zoom some of the folks who who were involved with the design. Okay, great. So the engineer who did the traffic study and Tom Walsh, who from TSW who did the site plan. He's not the original designer on the on the site plan, but he is the original designer's boss.
So anybody have any questions or thoughts? You know, I watched the planning commission meeting and was a little accused, confused myself about what what the different concerns were that people had. Anyway.
And you're saying some the letter you the memo you provided gives us some insight. This has given us some insight into what some of those discussions were.
That's right. Just so you know what was right.
That weren't put forward by the planning commission, but it was under discussion.
That's right. That's right. Had they, right, had they voted to recommend, these would have been included. These three would have been included in that.
Okay.
Mike, was there anybody in favor of it, planning commission meeting?
In the members of the public who spoke in the, I don't believe so, in the, do you recall Diane in the public hearing? Yeah.
Because I know there was like 44 or 46 people over at the charrette they had over at Fox Hall. None of them wanted it either. Then I know there was a town hall meeting recently. None of them wanted it either. And that's just where we're at. I don't I don't know why, what are we trying to do here?
Due process that everybody gets from.
Okay, the due process. Well, you know, one thing I'm concerned about too, you know, when these people, you know, like Mr. Perkins, he talks about spending crazy amounts of money, having to fix stuff for runoff and things of that nature. And I just think the citizens have spoken. I think when the citizens speak pretty much at 100 to zero, we need to listen up here. Because I'm going to vote with them because I'm trying to protect this place. And until we some other things in order, but that's another story. But either way, I'm trying to find somebody who wants this and I'm finding nobody. That's all I got.
As far as the runoff, that's addressed in condition seven, stormwater management. As far as runoff.
Okay. Yes.
The stormwater management condition seven addresses some of that.
That's right. That's that is a that condition is fairly boilerplate. It was not composed specifically for this for this application. But yes, there are there are processes in place to to handle stormwater, both in the construction phase, which is really the biggest risk period.
Okay.
And then in and the post-development phase to to prevent, you know, the additional impervious surface from creating peak flows that scour streams and things like that. But the state is involved in both of those. They write the standards in the blue book for post-development. And in the green book, we're not a local issue of authority on stormwater permit. So the state is actually responsible. But we do have parallel code language. And our engineer will be reviewing their erosion and sediment control plans, which is the construction phase work, as well as be reviewing the post-development storm water design. And so they will be responsible for handling the erosion sediment control during the construction and designing designing the site well to to prevent issues with with new peak flows.
Okay. And that, I mean, that's standard for developments when they come through. They have to comply with all of.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Given that that's standard, but that neighbors, you know, people on neighboring properties operating farms that rely on the water and so on there. No special effort has been made to to, you know, you said boilerplate. So nobody's actually gone to try to address what the people on neighboring properties have concerns about?
So the theory is that the measures already in place should provide sufficient sufficient control. We could discuss if we wanted additional elements. I don't know if you're thinking of development phase or or post-development.
I mean, I'm I'm thinking that as somebody like my colleagues with no expertise in the area, you know, people adjacent want better environmental evaluation and so on. And I just wondered if anything like that had been, excuse me, considered or undertaken here.
It certainly required. You know, I get why people are concerned because we've had the case over there, close to where these folks are, of a couple of people doing agricultural clear cutting that created real runoff issues. The RICO Lake people in particular, right?
That's right. That's right. That wasn't.
I get why they're so sensitive to it.
That wasn't reviewed or controlled by the city in any way.
Of course, I get that.
Hey, Mike. You can you finish your thought? You said additional what? Additional, what would be additional measures for that?
So it's it's difficult sitting here right now to think of what they might say. I mean, we conceivably, you could design to a a different storm event level. Instead of a 50 year storm, a 25 year storm, something like that. You could insist on, for example, when there's single, you get too close to a stream, you need double rows of silt fence. You could change that distance to a farther distance from the stream. So you're getting double rows even in other places. You could over engineer some of the ponds that are required to to clear the water before it goes out so that they, I don't know, have greater capacity, slower release. I mean, I I would want an engineer to to craft those. But those are, I mean, those are just a couple of things that come to mind. I don't know honestly whether those would would have much effect one way or another, the ones I named. But if we could have an engineer weigh in on if we wanted to try to strengthen the regular requirements. We could certainly consult with an engineer on that.
I was curious to what you were leading to there. Thank you.
Hey, Mike, just something I was thinking about that, you know, a lot of other cities cities do might actually help your process go a little smoother. A lot of them actually have permit committees. And what they do. have permit committees. And what they do is they just ensure compliance. They're a board. They look at your, whatever's out there. And that is their job. That's how they serve the city. Some of the other things they do, they enforce zoning. They make sure preservation's done in a timely fashion. They touch on some of the stuff Mr. Lightsey just spoke about, the environmental issues. That's a big thing out here, especially with the current water system down there. We know that. They oversee the proper recording of permits. That way, we can find these things. They facilitate reporting to the public and enable public disclosure. It seems like to me, a lot of what we're having problem with is information and disclosure, getting access to find out what's really going on, this and that. You know, a permitting board, I would actually like to, Ms. White, if you'd put that on next month's discussion, I think that would clear up a lot for everybody and take a lot of paperwork out of your office. And give us the information that we need because I was just sitting there listening to you answer Rodney. And that just reminded me more and more, yeah, we need to look at that. And if the council would look at that, I'd appreciate that next month. Thank you.
What, what? Is that number seven? No. You were just referring to a permit for?
No, I was referring to a board that oversees. So when somebody receives a permit and we finally get to the process which Mr. Lightsey's been talking about, we get all that ironed out, we've got a group of individuals to make sure what comes from this council is done in A, B, C, D fashion. That way, when this man right here asks a question, he can get an answer.
He got, he sounded like he got a pretty good answer from Mike, but.
That's all I.
Do you guys have any thoughts or questions about this? Again, we got the applicant here. I mean, I heard that they had agreed not to put any houses on the forty acres.
That's right.
Potential condition could be to put that in conservation before any houses are built.
If that's a concern, I would encourage you to discuss with the applicant. They expressed their flexibility absolutely on that, on that issue.
Mike, on number four, the second point here, public water and sewer are a long way away. Development that requires these services and is an expensive proposition on the site. And one of the things, I attended the zoning board meeting on, on this last month. And there was shared, according to one of their conditions, a letter, engineering type letter. It was referred to in the meeting as the engineering letter. I don't know what, what's it called?
They just asked for a letter from an engineer, which is in, is here in the packet.
Right. And it, it referred to distances, considerable distances, that raise important concurrency issues for the availability of water and sewer. There was a feeling, I, it seemed that these, these questions weren't really addressed much. We don't have anything that looks like a concurrency plan for providing any of what is required to, to do any of this. And then the letter itself mentioned the need for a lift station on the site. So as far as I can tell from, you know, the mileage and the lift station and so on, we're talking about millions of dollars, according to engineers I've spoken with. I mean, is that, if I say millions of dollars and you nod, you're agreeing with me?
Yeah, I don't know the numbers, but yes, it would be quite a lot of money.
If that's required, it's very expensive. Is, is that something that you guys are?
Well, their own engineer noted.
No, but they're the ones paying for it. And that's built into your pro forma's and, sorry. Yeah. I mean, those are the kind of questions that you might ask them. And again, if you don't, if their answers don't satisfy, that's fine, but it's.
Well, no, it would be good for you to speak to it because it's been a concern raised by numerous people. So if you could, if you could speak to how you intend and when you intend, what is your, what's your schedule for doing this millions of dollars of investment in infrastructure?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, the first step is the zoning process where we come up with the concept plan. We go through how it's going to be laid out once, assuming that would be approved. Then we would engage the engineers who would actually do the detailed plan of the water and sewer lines. We know where the connection points are. There's a couple of options, but the main one up on Hutchinson Ferry. And then we would have them design it. And then we would get actual cost for it. And that would be, we have a pro forma now where we have anticipated costs from other developments we do all over. And then once we get the engineered plans, we would bid those out. And then we would have to do, before anything here could be built, we would have to have the water and sewer in for any of the developments. So that would be done upfront as, right after we were doing the grading, before we could put any of the homes in because they're all going to have to be on that system.
And how soon do you intend to do this?
Well, depends. Typically, the engineering and the permitting for everything, I don't know specifically in Chad Hills, typically takes between nine to twelve months. And then we would start after that, once we had an LDP.
You know, so I know about where water is relative to development. Water's pressure feet, so that's not a pumping thing for you. Do you know if you have to get over a ridgeline to get to the nearest sewer line?
Yes, from preliminary talks, we would need to have a lift station pressurized going back up to the main line on, on Hutchinson Ferry.
So you've built that in already?
Correct.
Can you, just to satisfy my ignorance, when you say pro forma, what do you?
So what we look at is, this one's 274 units. It's a mix of townhomes and single family. We've got a couple flats and some commercial. And so what we do is we put all that together. We put in the infrastructure cost, which the most expensive ones to get to the property are going to be your water and sewer. Then you're going to have substantial cost, obviously, with grading and putting in the infrastructure of the roads, the parking, the stormwater and everything else. And then you look at what you anticipate, obviously the cost of the sales are for the different units. And that's kind of what comes together in your pro forma to see how the project will do and make sure it pencils. So it's a, one, we want it to be a great development for the community, but also we want it to be a successful development for us and the builders involved in the project. Does that answer your question?
I mean, mostly. I've just.
The financial model, basically.
Right. And I just want, I wonder how that works because it's such an enormous amount of money upfront, just to, before you do anything.
And that's typical. I mean, 274 units is not that big of a development for us, but there is substantial cost up, up front. But it's not atypical to have big costs for, for sewer and water, getting them to the property.
Yeah.
Do you have any current maps available of where the water is going to start, where it's going to hook up to and all that? A lot of people wanting to know, hey, they're going to come by digging up my front yard to put a pipe in. Do we have anything like that?
Yes, it's in the packet.
In their packet.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you look in the, in the packet there, it shows you where on Hutchinson Ferry. It's going to go in the, the right of way, all the way down from Hutchinson Ferry to Rico Road.
Can you go up there and point that out so people understand what we're talking about? We're the only ones that get the packet.
We need a, we need a map.
Yeah. Because I mean, you know, we keep hearing all this talk of water.
Mm-hmm.
Are you running one main?
Yeah, like.
It's not on private property. It's not on private property, right, Mike?
No, it'll be in the right of way. There shouldn't be any, any easements needed from, from property owners.
Good. Thank you.
Two, when it comes to, to the water, just a quick question. Ironic, I had a family member that worked at the Douglas Water Authority. So unfortunately, I thought that was some weird information I obtained over the years, but it actually made some sense now. But there's a lot of conversation about these forever chemicals. Have you heard about those that are in the water now? By 2026, they may be passing some laws that require you to be able to pull this out of the water. This is a, you know, if you do a little reading, this is some of the varnishes or whatever. There's something that they're having trouble with. But either way, I find that a concern with a lot of what I read in this town about the current water situation, of our developments, knowing we're getting a new one, water coming here. Water's kind of everything. And I'm just wondering, have you guys heard of that? Are you prepared to make an adjustment? Or I don't know a lot about that. I'm trying to get educated on, what does that mean? That means we got to filter something out of our water that's not, we're not allowed to. They're saying we can consume that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're well aware of that situation, well aware of the fluoride situation going on. We would be tapping into the existing water. We would defer any filtration. That would be in individual homes or units that would be doing that as a second layer. We actually are doing that in several of our homes in Douglas County and actually in North Atlanta. That helps.
I'm asking for your help on this. This is kind of, you're, you're a developer. I'm just wondering if that's, or maybe Tom can answer. Is that something that takes place at the county level? Maybe they're a big pump station or something. I don't know.
It, it takes place at the provider level? So in this case, yeah, it would be Atlanta Watershed actually that's responsible for meeting those.
Once those laws change, they got to get it out of our water. Okay.
That's right. That's right.
All right.
But we, we don't have another water supplier. What, you said there's another water supplier?
He was just talking about like Douglas County or whatever, but that, that is.
I had a relative issue and gave me, no, I thought was information on my life that I read that article.
Got it.
Like if you wind up on jeopardy.
No, but I mean, it's one of the, I just know about that because when we had our factory, we had our own well and it was a community system because it was used for a lot of people. And you had to meet all of those state and federal requirements because you were a provider, right? And so same issue here, the provider is Atlanta in this case, but they have to meet all of the state and federal requirements. And, and that's not something that.
That changes above us.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I guess that's the question. I just didn't know how to ask it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Again, we got the developer here. We, you know, the, again, I had heard the conversation about the, the forty acres across the road and your willingness not to do anything on that, not development on. And, you know, it strikes me that it'd be very much in keeping with what we do in Chatty G Hills to go ahead and preserve that, put a farm on it, whatever. But it feels like you guys are open.
Yeah, we're absolutely open to that. The idea originally was to do a select amount of formats over there, the larger, larger lots where they could come over to the core of the community in the town. I know just adjacent to us, there's going to be several formats as well. But we're very open to taking that down to a lower number or even to zero to keep it open space and, and keep everything on one side of the road, as we did here from some of the residents, the concern of having a second entrance going across the road. And we did, when we held the meeting, it was actually held at Foxhole, we had a lot of people in support of it. We had some that were against it, some that had a lot of questions, but there were a lot of them, especially that stayed later afterwards, asking us additional questions, but that were excited for a development like this, where they could go from the, from the area and get a place to eat, a breakfast sandwich, lunch, but somewhere where they had another option to go. So I do think there's some in support and obviously some not in support. But I did want to make that clear as we heard both from our, from our meetings.
At the public meeting that you held?
Correct.
I like that idea of the permanent preservation. Thank you for answering that question too. Upfront, potentially? I don't, what's the timing of that? If we ask for that?
Before, before.
Before the first build?
That's easy to.
For the thirty acres?
They would just, oh, right. Did you, did you want to ask for that to be preserved off, right off the top if it wasn't going to be developed?
Potentially. It was just a suggestion. I'm not sure.
How would you, would, you know, if you were to make a condition like that, you'd probably say before the first.
Right, right. I would say, yeah, by the time they get their, I guess their first final plat, that the, the thirty acres on the north side would be under conservation easement according to the rules in section, I guess, five, five of the, of the UDC.
Okay. I just think if it's going to be open space anyway, it might be a nice.
If that's where, yeah, if that's where it's headed, that's right.
Difference between open space and conservation land, so everybody knows. Open space is just a term, right? It's just open space until you put it under conservation, correct?
It, it's a term, right, right. So it is, it is a term in our, in the rules, we have, you can develop 30% open space in.
Mike, Mike, I'm just very simple. That's like saying right there, that town green, that's open space.
Right.
That's not conserved land.
Right. Not conserved until, as in a conservation easement. It is a belt and defenders thing.
No, I just want everybody to understand, there's a gap there.
What's the, well, I don't understand the gap then, because if, if a hamlet has to require 70% open space, they won't get any permits if they go below that. Have we had any examples of any hamlet going below 70%? Thank you.
What we have.
Don't spread misinformation.
It's not even information, Rodney. What we have is we have, since you asked, we have to go by what we, what we have, which is our one developer. Last time we put in a hundred acres of preserved land, the council said, no, we're not annexing any more land until some land gets preserved. Hundred acres went in. Since then, we hear, we hear about paperwork. We don't see it. And that's the facts. If you do your open records, that's what you'll see. Okay? So I'm, I'm not arguing with people about that. What I'm saying is we talk about this 70%. The math we got to work with is 1,501,54 with our current developer. That's what.
I feel like that's not correct.
We have 70%.
Everybody has their opinion.
Oh, open space is different than conserved land. Open space means we can move stuff around. You would like us to think that we're, we're not smart enough to move stuff on a common sense area when we can put some more land in.
Still going to land with 70.
Yeah. So it's just a different, it's just a different way of looking at it.
Either way, I'm interested in just considering that as a part of that condition potentially, since it's, it's open. Go ahead and do it potentially upfront.
Yeah, absolutely.
I guess.
I don't know. Is that?
No, sure. You know, whatever the council.
It's a, it's a suggestion. We don't have to.
facilitate a conversation.
But I'm not sure exactly with what's over there. That would, I don't know. They're planning on doing something else.
Mike, am I mischaracterizing it? I mean, it felt to me, so I know that there's a timeline on when the planning commission has to act on something, right? That there's a time limit within which they have to make some recommendation or not.
Right.
To the council. And that was about where we were with them, right?
So it's, it's in two sections. They can only defer for up to 90 days.
We can defer longer.
Correct.
Right. And so with the traffic study delay.
Right.
And then when the traffic study came in, it was like time up, right? They have to make some comment. Because it feels to me like they didn't really make their recommendation. They just voted to not move it forward to us, basically.
Right, right. Their, right, their motion.
I don't understand how that's not a recommendation.
Their motion.
Wasn't to approve. They didn't move to deny.
Their motion to approve was, was, didn't, didn't carry, right, four to two, or two to four.
I mean, that raises interesting questions. So they could, some of these, the three proposed conditions, maybe they, I'm not sure they could have additional insight into tweaking this to make it their.
Which one, which one are you?
I didn't hear it out loud. I'm on the, the three extra that were, that Mike presented.
Or we can, or we could just be wasting our time. I mean, I, you know, I, I, I just think that the council should have the fullness of the conversation that they want to have, right?
Hey, Mike, I do have a question about the traffic and entrance. So you were saying they could build like so many houses before they do anything? Or is trying to make sure that entrance was safe on the Rico, is it a Rico?
That's right. The main entrance at Rico, the site distance evaluation.
Right.
Right, right. And so it would be, it would certainly be evaluated before they built the entrance in our normal process. What's proposed in the condition would move it up a step and it would be before the first preliminary plat were to be approved by the planning commission, which would be the next step after the approval of zoning and the concept plan.
Okay. Because I know, you know, going around that curve is kind of danger. Would that be where the people coming in and out, like doing the building and stuff like that? Would that be the same?
Right. It would, right, it would address, right, it would address how close it was to that curve and, and how much site distance is available on that curve, but also look at any hills. So it's both horizontal and vertical site distance. The current location in my quick informal measurement seemed to be too close to that curve. But it was understandably designed right across the, from the existing Hopkins Road intersection, which is, that's good design, right, to, to use, extend the existing intersection, not have yet another intersection on the street. But the evaluation that's written into the condition is asked to consider both those elements in locating the entrance appropriately. And so it may have, it would improve site distances going up Rico Road if they moved the entrance down. But then you have to deal with the Hopkins Road intersection and consider how close you are to that. You need to be an appropriate distance away from that intersection on the other side. I think there's enough room along there that they could, they could move it down and everything would be fine. But that'll be an engineer's evaluation and review.
But that happens before any houses are built?
Right.
That happens before any houses are built?
It happens before they get the final plat. Yeah, yeah. Before, actually, before their.
So that's before construction.
Before their permit to build the entrance is given to them, before that land disturbance permit that lets them put their internal road in. That gets reviewed, yeah.
Mike, what is?
Mike, what is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're good.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
You're fine, okay.
Can I ask a question real quick, Scott? Based on the traffic, Rico Road and South Fulton Parkway, it's already below the service level, LO.
Right, the traffic study identified peak hours, peak PM hours as already being level of service.
Because of the amount of through traffic.
Okay, the existing traffic, right.
Right, existing traffic. So if there is an improvement at that intersection, was that an automatic roundabout funded by the Merrill Project? Or is that a traditional traffic light? Or is that something we have not addressed or?
Yeah, it hasn't been addressed directly, of course, GDOT would have, it's GDOT's road, the Parkway, it'd be there right away. Any improvements would have to be built within and we would have to work with an engineer to determine the proper improvements.
Is the Parkway, didn't we have a plan where the Parkway, all the intersections were roundabouts, period?
Supposed to be.
That's the, right, yeah, that's the long, the long-term vision for that, that's right.
And GDOT has, has reconfirmed that verbally in DRI processes that we've had since then. Now, there have been DRIs for other projects outside of the city that have referenced those intersections. So I think some of the warehouse developers probably have some responsibility for some of those, things that have already been zoned. But GDOT also has expansion plans for that road as, as traffic increases, they always have. I mean, we know that, right, it's already graded for four lanes most of the way.
Now, look at like 154 where the, the roundabout just makes them safer.
Yeah.
Already had a local fatality, I mean, that was just a thought.
With the traffic studies, Mike, shouldn't we be getting Steve's first because of what he's already doing? And seeing what the state is requiring in that traffic study of totality? And then we know Buchart's, who knows what that's going to look like when it's all said and done. But then we need to see something from here. Because if there's anything I've learned, I mean, the importance of a traffic study, that last NOD, 26 road changes. And you know, a lot of our comp plan says you ain't paving a gravel road, you ain't widening roads. I'm trying to figure out what you doing, because the last NOD I got was 26 road changes. And now you've got something that's 8,000 acres fixing to hand us a sheet of paper permitting. That's bigger than a lot of small cities. I got to see that traffic study. I need to see, you know, when you, when you see what their plans are, what, what the, I guess what you call the developers have told us is going to happen with this area. Now, that's their vision for this area. I need to see these before I turn this place into a construction zone. Because I think that that one needs to come first because that one's building now. We need to see what, what needs to change there and then where everybody else. Or this whole city will become a detour, you will be a traffic zone, look at your roads right now. You know, this, this, you know, put this on us, this on us, this on, this on us, and here comes big 8,000 acre guy. We got a lot of talk in the day before we just, you know, I mean, before we even think about passing this stuff.
The difficulty.
In my opinion, I mean, citizens need to pay attention. These permits could equal, you know, 50, 60, 70,000 people. Drive around your city, you got 3,300 people, that's what it looks like. Think about what it looks like with 60,000. That's reality, those are numbers. You know, a couple of questions too, quit asking me, people, number one, about why you keep seeing these videos on Aretropolis? Why they keep selling us out? These people right here that the microphones are in their face, ask them these questions. There's a lot of videos you see out there, these people right here, stand up for what's yours. All I'm doing is giving you the real numbers.
All right, let's go back to this conversation because it's always so interesting to talk about all of the other things.
I'm sorry, but the traffic studies I think are very important, Mike. If we get them in the right order, would you agree or disagree?
They're, they're on the way.
On the way, okay.
Could I ask, I have a couple of technical questions that, on the traffic study stuff that I just.
We have the engineer, I believe.
Yes, traffic engineer.
The first ones for Mike, just is because of the, has a traffic study that was already like commissioned and sort of in line first. And so this one, and then something went wrong, it got delayed, now it's underway apparently and, but they're first in line for their traffic study. So theirs need not, as I understand it, maybe you could speak to this, theirs need not address this development, but this development's technically, shouldn't it address their traffic study? My misunderstanding?
This development doesn't require a DRI. DRIs are cumulative, they each look at the ones that have happened before.
Yeah, the traffic study we did was based on a request either from council or planning and zoning. We didn't meet the requirement being 273, but we did want to be able to show and it got delayed because of some of the road work. But it, to the mayor's point, it wasn't triggered by a DRI or any requirement or a traffic study.
So there's no need for it to address anything, but I'm just trying to get my head around the traffic study issue because, well, and, and, I mean, obviously, I'm in district, I'm the District 3 representative, so I have a lot of people very concerned about the traffic in that corridor there because we're all used to driving Rico Road, which of course, having been repaved, has become the autobahn. I've been passed more in the last month than in the previous five years. But the, the, the other question I had is, what's the regulatory force of a word like recommend in a traffic study?
Right, it's, no, that's the, right, that's just an engineer's recommendation unless we incorporate it in our conditions, which we've done. It doesn't, it doesn't carry, the traffic study itself doesn't carry any force.
Okay, I was curious because the, I had.
DRIs as well, by the way, it's our conditions that enforce the.
Okay.
Requirements.
What was mentioned, and I don't, I'm not familiar with this, AASTO, AASTO? I had a resident contact me with concerns about the AASTO standards and the ability of the entrances to meet those requirements, which apparently is on page 23 of the traffic study. Can you speak to that a little bit?
So I, I think that's probably talking about the entrance site distance that we were just talking about? And those standards come out of the AASTO.
For large vehicles on two-lane roads with intersections, the table standards say that, that what's needed is almost 1,000 feet and 12 some seconds. I'm hoping the resident comes and shares this information with us as part of the public. But the, but as I read this, the, the standard is calling for, for something that's almost three times what's possible given the conditions of the road.
I, so, so it needs to be interpreted and reviewed by an engineer. The number that I found for 45 mile an hour road is 500 feet, but I don't, I'm not, I don't use those standards all the time. I'm not, I'm not an engineer. So it will certainly be, be reviewed by them.
Mike, do you want to have Victor speak on that?
Yeah, absolutely, that would be.
Victor, you have to be a traffic engineer. Victor, can you hear us? Did you hear the question?
Sorry, could you rephrase that question? I also want to make sure that you could hear me properly.
We can hear you, the question was basically around the AASTO guidelines for entrances and exits of a place like this and whether those were considered in your process.
No, the only thing that we considered was the possibility that maybe without any additional clearing of vegetation or trees, that you might not be able to meet those standards. That doesn't mean that we performed any analysis to confirm or, you know, just to check. All that we did, that's not considered part of the scope, that's not considered part of the scope of the study. So all we do is we include that mention whenever we believe that there are horizontal or vertical curves or potential site distance restrictions because of trees or vegetation, we just put that out there because that's something that should be considered as part of the design process, not the study process.
So do I understand from, from what you're saying, we're having some difficulty understanding you, but the, but do I understand that the study was, only took essentially residential traffic into mind?
Well, it, it sounds like they were doing the traffic count part of it without necessarily taking the recommendations back to the AASTO standards, is what I just heard him say.
Right.
So our engineers are the ones that would have to say.
Their study on page 20, 23 references the AASTO standards, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I know, it doesn't, it confuses me too.
All that we did was mention AASTO standards, that's something that needs to be done after the traffic study is reviewed and approved. So there's no analysis work that we did, we don't have any survey data, we don't have any data on our end where we can say definitively it does or doesn't meet that, those standards.
Well, I was given a table that shows it's impossible and so.
Can I, can I jump in? This is Tom Walsh.
Yeah.
Yeah, we challenged AASTO standards all the time and their, and their guidelines, that doesn't necessarily mean that we can't meet the standards. We can meet the standards and I've dealt with, I mean, the GDOT engineers all the time where we've not actually had to abide by an AASTO standard. And it depends, this all depends on speed, vertical curve, horizontal curve, sightline distances. It's all about safety and getting, and our firm takes the approach that AASTO is purely a vehicle driven document. And we, we go back and we want complete streets, we want slower streets, we want pedestrians involved to be safe as well as bicyclists. So once you, and if you approve this, this plan, we'll go back, work with the engineer because we have a lot of experience in this, we have a traffic engineer on our staff. And that traffic engineer travels all over the United States, he's in demand because he deals with these kind of issues on a regular basis. So we would marry up our traffic engineer with, with Victor and, and then I think we can solve those problems. But you first have to approve the plan so we can do the additional study, but it can be accomplished.
And, and Mike, our process is anyway, when their engineer says this is what we're doing, our engineer looks at that and approves it, correct?
That's correct.
Or, or doesn't, or asks for changes or whatever.
Work with that engineer, I'm going to Carrollton tomorrow to work with on another project, the traffic engineer, the fire department. We work very closely, we want to all work together and solve this and we feel very confident that we can make this work without an issue. But again, you've got to approve ultimately the plan so we can go forward to start making those studies.
And again, nothing gets built until all of that's done and signed off on anyway.
That's correct.
It feels a little cart before the horse, approve us and then we'll figure out if we can do this.
Well, that's normally, that's normally the way it's done all the time, this is not, this is not an anomaly, this is done throughout all municipalities. So this isn't, we're not trying to buck a standard or reinvent something, this is normally the way it's done.
When, can, maybe you could just, because you started out, the first statement you made, I think, was we beat AASTO standards all the time. So what, what's, what's involved in that?
We deal with AASTO standards all the time.
What is, what's involved in that?
Well, you go to, we call it the Green Book, you go to and you review their standards, you look at like the chart, I don't have it in front of me, you look at the chart, you look at speed differences, you look at the road speed, is it 45? Can we, and sometimes we ask, can we reduce the speed because we're engaging more pedestrian? And you all are famous for the bike, bike traffic throughout there, so we might want to have a different speed limit like down to 35 so it's safer for bicyclists on Rico Road, so there, we.
So to meet the standard, we would have to drop the speed limit to 35?
No, I don't, I don't know, I mean, again, you're asking me to solve a problem that where it's just, until we get to it, we, we have to work together. Your engineer, your, your city engineer is going to tell us whether it's acceptable or not. So you, your protection is your civil, your, I'm sorry, your traffic engineer telling you, yes, they're meeting whatever standard that you want to apply.
Can I ask a question? Scott, you done?
Yeah.
Yeah, quick question. We've got a couple of different developments that are on the table, sir. What I'm, what I'm asking is, you know, you got two or three different traffic studies to look at. We've got, you know, Saranby, you're familiar with Saranby, council's asked for a traffic study. So I'm thinking based upon what the results of that are, will, will help us look at what these other developments are going to need. I don't see how we can pass anything without looking at that because the last NOD I read made it real clear that, well, in our case, that Palmetta could build whatever they wanted as long as they got our permission. And when I wrote, read the back of that NOD, it said this stuff is non-negotiable, you will fix these roads, you will do all this. I think we got a development coming toward us about 7,000 acres. I don't, I don't know what a traffic study looks like for that, but I know I need to see it. To see, you know, what the future of our build out looks like in our town, our citizens need to see that, what does that look like? And my question to you is, I got three of them coming at the same time. Should, should we get all three of them before we move forward? Or should we figure out, you know, the developer who's developing, should he be giving that to me first? So we can guide the other developer, does that make sense?
Well, the standard process is that each individual company has to do their own traffic engineer. I've not heard of, and it, not to say that it shouldn't happen, that they've been married up together, but normally your traffic engineers should be coming up with the same sort of conclusions separately as opposed to working together. I can't imagine why that wouldn't be there, but they are each looking at each individual project and determine that. And, and they're looking at what existing traffic counts are and trying to predict what future traffic counts might be.
Yeah. Okay, you answered my question, thank you. I say it boils down to common sense, thank you.
Keep, keep something else in mind too, right? There, there are DRI thresholds for a reason. You have developments of a size and scale that they're expected to have external impacts, right? And then there are other developments that are smaller and you're not worried about what the turn lanes look like and, you know, the, the actual management of the in and out. That they're not having huge external impacts and, and so, I mean, this one is by rights, a small one, doesn't require a DRI. We do have other DRI ones coming, I don't know that it's legally legitimate to tie these together with bigger developments that aren't this. And I don't know what the answer to that is, but.
I would have to get back to you on that, whether you can force them to consider that.
I mean, they can't impact it is the problem. What's that?
Pass the dead.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't force them all together, I'm just thinking from a common sense standpoint, if I'm doing this little thing over here, this guy's doing this massive thing. What's to say that he doesn't play catch up and the state tells him, you got to do half of what I had today because you're so far behind?
Well, that's the thing, these guys aren't, these guys don't have any of those kind of requirements because it's such a small project.
No, no.
To your point, the big project's going to have a ton of requirements.
I get it, I need to see this one before I see that one, that's all I'm saying, because that's what my citizens need to see. What is the disruption right now that needs to be caught up and brought to standard before we add something else?
Almost none because of this.
Aren't they, they're doing it in the time required.
Has nothing to do with time required.
No, there isn't standard, I think, when, when they're required to conduct the studies.
Can I address two, two issues that were brought up at the very beginning of the meeting quickly? Am I allowed to do that?
Sure.
One of them was that, it was said that the gentleman pointed out that there's a number of citizens against the project. And I want to point two quick projects out that had the same issue but had a different end result. Vickery in Forside County, it was fiercely, fiercely voted against and our people, citizens were against it. And one of the councilmen was really, was against the whole project and really beat up on me. And three years later, I was walking a group through the development and out walks the councilman from one of the houses, he had moved into Vickery. So ultimately, I asked him, why did you, you hated the project, why did you move into it? He says, well, it's a great project, it's very walkable, so people's minds can be changed. We're doing a project right now in Fayetteville, Arkansas, right next to the University of Arkansas, that's, we're saving over 60% of the land. And the citizens all around it are against it because they wanted the whole thing to stay green and, and be like it's been for the last 40 years. And it's now under construction and they're worried about the same drainage things. Our staff did an unbelievable job of creating these drainage swales and working with existing drainage. Plus we saved over 50% of the, the green space and now the citizens are, I've been getting feedback from them because I go there on a regular basis, they really love other projects turning out. So this project in itself, if you look at the maps, we're saving an incredible amount of land on, on this thing and concentrating the houses where they, where they should be. So I, my feeling is, is that we follow the rules and so we're doing, we're doing the right thing.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Scott.
Um, um, what else? On just following on Camille's point from my notes on the, if I can be following on Camille's point about the part of across the road in the zoning meeting. Commissioner Crespo noted that the sections six one B about encouraging pedestrian traffic and limiting conflict between pedestrians and cars. Six two A one clustering about walking and relationships among the elements of a development. And and five seven D in which all dwellings must be connected by pedestrian ways as definitions of Hamlet, which I went and looked up and he was spot on with that. So just pointing out that that having housing across the street is expressly not part of our.
Which they've removed.
Definition of Hamlet. So just reinforcing that. And then on 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 the red lines, number fifteen, owner will take steps to limit potential for injury at the location of the former quarry. The whole discussion of the quarry started out with applicant's representative describing it as a gentle depression in the ground. And it rapidly was noted by local residents in District Three that that it's a sixty foot rock face. And and so I was wondering why that struck out. And then in number eight, it refers to the property containing a house built in nineteen eighty. Anecdotal and other evidence of the property wants farms. And then and then contingent on that anecdotal and other evidence that a portion was used as a quarry. Well, there's no there ain't no anecdote there. It was a quarry. It's a major thing. And, you know, it's kind of a curiosity out there in the woods, but it's a it's a attractive nuisance, as I believe it was designated in the meeting. An attractive nuisance when it's in the in a residential area. And so I wonder if you could speak to since that evident, bless you, I'm sorry. Mike, why why is fifteen struck out?
Right.
On on additional, which is on page three on the back there. And if and if we could speak to that very concerning issue of the presence of this quarry.
Right. So a couple of things, I guess we should let the the property also also respond. So that was just a staff amendment. It was added in response to a comment. The owner's concern for liability will outweigh anything we can put in for a condition. And so just let them be the judge of 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 how concerned they need to be about about liability there. My understanding, it is not, it's not a quarry in the sense of a hole. It's they dug into a a hillside, right? So there's not, there's not a hole. Of course, if you go to the top.
Cliff.
Right, right. I would prefer to see it turned into amenity, honestly. You could, I imagine you could do some very dramatic things visually with that feature and would prefer to see it addressed in that way. Of course, if you're attracting people to it as a feature, you would include elements that would prevent people from not prevent, you can probably never prevent, that would discourage people from doing what they shouldn't be doing to endanger themselves.
Okay.
How does that differ like from having a pond or other things where people could get into trouble? Right? I mean, we don't have people with fences around their pond. I don't know. I haven't seen that. I'm just trying to figure out. There are other things, too, that can be inherent to a property and may be dangerous, maybe.
And and that's what I was.
I'm not sure. I'm just trying to think that through.
Is we see it as an amenity like the creek that goes through the property, too. Is we want to use it as something. It's not a sheer cliff. Here's what the quarry is. So if you didn't know what it was, it just looks like a mountainous area. Obviously, there'll be no development on it, but we think that'll be part of the open space and potentially a little park. We have to, obviously, with some of the steep areas, we've got to keep that in mind, just like we do with the creeks or anything else. But we see it as a unique feature on the property that's that makes it different and and unique.
Okay, what would when you say plant the creek as an amenity, what's the plan for that?
So we typically have, if we have a creek, we like to do trails, pedestrian trails along the along the creek so they can follow those up and down. It can have and connect to the rest of the community trails. But also, a lot of our properties, we'd like people to be able to go into nature and to be able to enjoy those as an amenity as opposed to putting a fence around them or blocking them off. So we try to use a lot of the natural amenities to be part of the community as opposed to as opposed to separate from it or fenced off.
Okay.
So again, just from a staff perspective, it just felt like a place that the government didn't need to insert itself. There's civil, right? Civil control of that liability issues. You all can certainly add that back in as council, right? Obviously, it's there. You can just say, when you make a motion on this, you could add, you could add condition fifteen. But it just felt like it wasn't a place for a government to insert it off in 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 staff opinion.
Okay. Can I add any other?
I I'm just waiting for it to be done and you can move on to the next one.
Well, I have a lot of questions because it's in District Three and I'm getting a lot of.
Yeah, sure.
About it. The one of one of the public raised at the last at the at the last zoning meeting, the presence of bald eagles on the property. And this sparked a, you know, flurry of photographs going around of bald eagles photographed in the in the vicinity. And 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 that kind of that that brought me that just to repeat myself in case I'm not heard, the at the last zoning meeting, a Mr. Hudson from Zone from District Three raised the the question of whether there were protected bald eagles on the property because they've been photographed on both east and west sides of the property through the throughout the Rico Lake adjacent development and so on. And so I was wondering on 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 the subject of, you know, of environmental issues and the the context of the land, the length of time the property has been vacant and so on. Do we know what has taken up residence there and if it's protected? Do we? I mean, do we have any idea?
Right. So that's well, can that we can ask the applicant what what they don't know. They did. They did turn in as a site assessment. But that would be condition, one of those planning commission conditions would address that directly if you're requiring a a more formal study.
And and bald eagles are federally protected, so you can't.
Well, the D N R comes in. If they find a nest, they'll tell you what you can and cannot do.
That's right.
So that's who needs to be contacted, the D N R.
Yes, I don't assessment that should take place before we start.
Yeah, people are seeing bald eagles. Yeah, you just.
It's part of the condition eighteen. It's eighteen.
I think we can condition it, but again, the developer has a federal responsibility there that's beyond us.
With their, that's the proposed new condition, number eighteen, I think. Yeah.
Right. And and we were fine with getting a study and looking at endangered species or anything else.
I don't think it's really a study. I think it's just you contact the D N R. They come out and they, if they find a nest, then they'll tell you what you can and cannot do. It doesn't give you. You don't have any rights compared to D N R.
Right, but the one way they ask for us to get a study to.
It's not even a study. They go and find it. If it ain't there, life goes on. If they find it, they tell you what you can and can't do.
Right.
Not a study at all. It's a it's a hunt for an eagle.
But would the qualified consultant then, if it required the D N R, that qualified consultant would recommend? If there's a person at the Department of Natural Resources, they would, that would be part of that process.
What you do is you call the D N R.
Yeah.
Well.
That's all you do.
I'm just making sure.
Get a consultant, you call the D N R. If bald eagles are located, they'll tell you what you can and can't do. It's very simple. We don't farm it out.
So we can, we can add, if you want, in a condition explicitly, and I think this would happen whether it's written in a condition or not. But anything identified in the study would be reported to D N R.
Anything I didn't.
It's a federal requirement that that take place, so. Anything else, Scott?
The I've just had so many inquiries about the traffic, the traffic study, the volume of traffic, the concerns around the, you know, that it that it meets and every and yet everybody's aware of the of the implications of of, you know, what is this, two thousand odd trips a day added by the added on Rico Road to this site alone, by this site alone. And 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 given the exigencies of the road and the entrances on the road, the adjacent communities and so on. I think that I you said, you said that the, I mean, the Ashto standard thing, I thought, didn't get adequately answered overall, but the obviously needs more attention. But you referred to that it would get more attention from our engineer?
We would ask them to submit the data, the study of, but again, it's both vertical and horizontal, right? They're looking at both the curves and the hills. They present that with the plans and then that, yes, that gets reviewed by our engineer. So our engineer doesn't go out there and survey the site, but they, the applicant's engineer surveys the site, shows you what the topo looks like, shows you what the curves look like. They draw, you know, the site distances from, I think, three and a half feet high off the off the road where the intersection is, looking in both directions, and they give you what the site distance is and whether that meets the standard. And yes, our engineer would review that.
And that's part of, I mean, the standard of engineering, once we get approved and we go down that process, everything we're doing, they're looking at all of that stuff to make sure it's in compliance and then send it to the city for comments to make sure it's approved by the the city as well.
Can I ask, just because I don't know, obviously. So we're talking about, you know, approve this and then we'll do a bunch of engineering and figure it out. What if it doesn't work? What if what if you do that study? And and because of the way this meets the road, because it's very unique conditions there, the residents of Rico Hamlet have been very eloquent on this point that there that Rico Rico Lake have been very, very eloquent in stating their concerns around the the virtually impossibility of of maintaining safety in that curve through that section. And as a frequent driver, I I ride that part of Rico Road all the time. And and between the cyclists and the people coming in and out and thinking of two thousand additional vehicles, could maybe your traffic, the traffic guy could speak to what, you know, and here I'm here, I'm reckoning back to the or recalling back to the movie studio conversation where, you know, they're talking about, well, it's just a few cars going out left and right and so on. And finally, I asked, what's going to be in the road? And they said, oh, well, a traffic circle. Like, are are we looking at a future of a traffic circle or some other on like? I'm I'm trying to get a handle for the residents around there over what are the different contingencies? Because it doesn't seem possible to meet a safety standard, given that piece of road.
And we will have to meet that standard or we wouldn't be able to move forward. But maybe Victor can touch on. Victor, if you're there, if you can touch on just a quick summary of the traffic study of the intersections. One of the big things, it's not going to be a traffic circle. There are going to be turn lanes coming in and coming out to make sure it's taking care of the traffic and it's safe. But maybe Victor, you can touch on kind of your summary of your findings for the intersection and the and the regional intersections.
Right, so there really isn't much in the way of actual traffic impact if we're talking about delays as evaluated through Synchro, which is the traffic simulation software that we use to analyze the impact of added site traffic in an area. That takes into account, of course, that turn lanes are added where they are supposed to be added. So provided that that is the case, we recommended right turn lane, a right turn lane and a left turn lane at that main site driveway to ensure safer and more efficient turning movements in and out of the development. But this traffic impact along that Rico Road corridor is not significant from this site. Now, that isn't to say that there aren't going to be other potential issues of things like speeding or site distance. Those things are not a matter of the traffic study scope. So all that Synchro can analyze are just those turning movements and the traffic flow itself.
Can I ask him a question real quick, Scott?
Go ahead.
Hey, hey, Victor. How many daily visitors will will we be getting from? It's really going to be about three million square feet of space. How many how many daily visitors are we going to be getting in that area?
Are you talking about from the development itself?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sometimes I'm asked this as a as a trick question, as as in it includes the existing traffic and all that. So from the traffic itself, if you go to page thirteen in the trip generation section in that table, we have two different, we have two different tables, actually. One focusing on the south side, the other on the north side. I know there have been conversations about potentially consolidating everything into just that south side. But either way, the trip generation numbers would work the same. And so you would simply just add.
So your numbers, the numbers that you've given us, not interrupt, make it simple, are the numbers you anticipate with this amount of square footage of space, with the the numbers that we already have, with the numbers of cars that already pass through our community.
These are.
Look at all three of those to come up with one number. That's what I'm asking.
Okay, so these are all based off of I T E trip generation criteria. This is a national standard for trip generation that does not, in this particular case.
I understand that. I'm just asking for a number, sir.
The number that we have for trip generation.
Let him answer your question, please.
So.
I did ask for a number. Very simple question.
So the independent.
Okay, it's okay, sir. No big deal. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, I guess a question I would have too, Mike, with this development, you know, we don't, we don't have impact fees. It's a discussion we probably should have had, but we don't have them. We've done a deep reclamation on that road, correct? We've dug that joker to the dirt. You know, there's a lot of weighted trucks coming around here. We spend a lot of our tax dollars on that stuff. You know, me personally, I'd like to see a million dollar cash bond put up for road repairs. And you can get it back when your development is completely done. Because we don't take any impact fees. So that's what I would like to say. I think it's about a million dollars a mile. That would be a condition that I would entertain if I entertained it. But I have to protect the money we've already got on the ground.
Wait, we had that meeting about impact fees a couple of years ago. Anyway, my I kind of my understanding from that was we our impact, the fee that it's really not a fee, but we we're when we look at developers is the seventy percent preservation we're requiring. There sort of impacts in a sense. They're giving up a little bit in that sense.
Damage bond is kind of a different thing from an impact fee. Scott, do you have more questions? Anybody else?
I mean, I I've asked most of my questions. I'm not sure I understand all of all of the answers that I think what I find most difficult to understand is the is concurrency, getting this getting sewer and water and the speed with which that's to be done. I mean, can we can we condition, for example, that if they don't get a land disturbance permit within six months or a year that they come back to be rezoned rural? If they're not doing that, doing what they say they do, you know, we have a lot of developments sitting around waiting for sewer. The Rosa Grove on Caps Ferry, of course, you know, got taken to task for that and approved anyway. But that's the idea that we're that we're approving things that can't be done. You know, a lot of municipalities would just say, now, wait till you have a, you know, show us you have a plan where this is actually going to happen. And here we're getting, trust me.
Actually, most most municipalities do when it's a thing where a company has to put in the lines to get to the plant. Just require them to do that because that's a fairly normal thing. To your point here, it's a little further away, right?
It's enormously further away.
Again, we've had ones. Anyway, the question was, what can you condition like that?
Reversion? My understanding is if.
It's not a reversion. If you come back and.
No, it's a reversion. Yeah.
Right.
Right. So the problem is, anytime we're dealing with property rights, citizens have.
Speak in the microphone.
Anytime you're dealing with property rights that citizens have, right? And the city then.
Now, move it closer. That's the, like, much closer.
You have to speak into it.
Anytime you have right, property rights that we're dealing with, right, with zoning and anything else that the city does, okay? It's a limitation on citizens' property rights. And then to have a later punitive action saying, hey, you didn't do this or you didn't do X, Y, and Z. do X, Y, and Z, right, that gets into a whole nother realm, exactly, realm of, of things that you get, because as a city, even though, you know, it is intuitive for us, hey, you didn't do this, we're gonna take this away, that's kind of intuitive, but we're a government body, and there are rules about government bodies taking punitive actions and, and doing things like that, so you have to be very sure about that.
I think, I think that's not my question, though. My question is, is if we say, we'll rezon this, then, you know, having extended that privilege, which is no kind of right, it's a privilege, and having extended that privilege in full consideration of the state, the state Supreme Court precedents regarding zoning, and then, the person to whom we've extended that rezoning can't deliver on what they promised to do when we granted the rezoning, why in the world can't we come back and say, in a reasonable amount of time, you have not done what you promised to do, so we are going to rezone your land back to its original zone?
Didn't we do that with the movie theater? Not interrupt Scott, but I think, didn't we do that with the movie guys?
You can have reversion clauses, it's just a question of what timing and-
It's put in upfront.
What's reasonable.
Yeah.
You, you just, you have to do that correctly.
Well, we can do it correctly, right? You just said we couldn't, but I just, now you're saying we can.
I didn't say we couldn't, I just said we have to be very careful about how that's done, because again, you're, you're taking, you've given something, then you're taking it away, and we have to be very careful about how it's done in order not to get into issues. We can, that, that's something I, I don't, I never want to give a legal answer off the top of my head that I haven't researched, right? Just, because that, I don't know, right, off the top of my head. That's something we'd have to, we could look at and say, okay, if, if that's something you want to consider as an amendment to the zoning application, you can, you and I can talk, and we can, and I can say, okay, this is how that would have to be done, if, if we were to do that legally, right? But I just, I can't, right off the top of my head.
Sure, no, I to- I totally understand that. I mean, I mean, in effect, that's a tacit argument for, or maybe a deferral that would allow for some of these things to be ironed out, because we've got a lot of unknowns on the case.
It feels like there are a lot of open questions being-
In that, in that case, Mike, I had a question, so, because I think we'd need to have some kind of consideration for if it's a third party causing the delay. For example, if Fulton County is causing the delay, and it's not the applicant, is, you know, just whatever, when we discuss that.
I'm not sure the goal of the condition is to speed up the development?
Well, it's, it's because we already-
I think what I'm saying is, the land ain't going nowhere. If you can't get water, you know, if you can't build, why are you coming in here for a permit?
Right, but-
Why don't you wait till everything's in place? That's what, that's what the, is that right, Scott? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm just-
Why are we handing out permits when people don't have the ability?
And I talked one second-
Guys, here's, here's the thing, I'm, I'm gonna respond to this one thread. I already said, you're not gonna spend the money to run sewer lines that you have to pay for from your piece of land to the place that they need to go, if you don't know you have your zoning, right? That's a, that's a, that's a silly request. The idea of saying, yes, you say you're gonna do this, and having some sort of a time horizon to it, is something that is within our bounds.
Right. And so, my understanding, general principle, is if they are investing the money and pursuing the project, they, they get to, I, I don't want to overstate, I'm, I'm not an attorney on this, basically, that they get to, it's, it's an issue to revert their zoning if they are pursuing the project and investing money. I don't know if, and this is coming from a non-attorney, but, and, and I don't know if the condition changes that general principle, right? If you say, if you add a condition written in a certain way, I, I don't know if it changes that, that general principle. So, if they were pursuing the project, investing money, trying to make it happen, and to Camille's point, what if the city of Atlanta is dragging their feet, or just can't make it happen within a certain timeframe, right, this timeframe question, I think that that's a-
That's an unknown.
I would agree you would want to consider, include some sort of out clause, if-
I have a question. We're talking about, I think I'll follow you, if they didn't do what they said they were gonna do, then undo what we said we were gonna do, undo the zoning. If we require them to put in X percent conservation needs, but you can't undo that, is that correct? How would-
That's just somebody halfway home and-
And here's, here's one more question. So that's one question that comes to mind as we talk about this. If one of the visions of our city is saving 70%, and we zone at Hamlet, and 70% with buffers, so the rest of my life, I drive down Rico Road, that's protected, and they don't develop it, who cares? It's a win, because it's protected. If, if we revert it back, I'm, I'm trying to follow his logic, how is that-
The land is a conservation entity.
I'll listen to you when I'm finished talking, Richie. Hey, I'll listen to you when I'm finished. Thank you, all right. I just don't follow that logic, it doesn't seem, I mean, they're missing a piece?
Well, no, it's not-
Or we're on a disconnect.
I mean, the, the logic is just the, of the ability to, to do what is being claimed can be done, and, and an extension of that piece of logic, is that if that sewer comes up Rico, well, every bit of land down the way is now much more potentially ready to develop, because developers follow the sewers.
Not with the pressure-
I don't agree with that either, because you can't, if it ran by my house, I couldn't tap into it.
You can't, but other developments can.
But what's the restriction here? You gotta have the minimum acreage, and you gotta preserve 70.
Because our line is pressurized, and it goes all the way down to say, what's the creek down there past Serenby, no one else can tie into it.
What I'm saying is, to his point, right, the only other people that can tie in are also tying with the pressurized line, they are developers, they are Hamlet developers. So yes, they could support-
Exactly.
Something that's allowed in our zoning.
But this, and, and of course, this goes to the, you know, the, the goal standards and so on, where we have to consider the larger implications of a given development, because inviting this development invites more development. And, and whether you like the development or not, and, and everybody loves the idea of buffered hamlets and so on, and that's great, but, but it, the fact is, it does change the, I think, the, the social and topography of the city, it changes the, the-
Scott-
Absolutely what we're talking about, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
Hey, Scott.
I'm trying to clarify.
Scott, here's a question, though. If, if you're passing by a lot of small lots, there's no pressure to connect to that. If you're passing by a big lot, and they decide to zone it to a Hamlet, and it fits our conditions, you've reached 70% preservation. So that, as long as you can see the pro, I'll acknowledge the con.
We're gonna disagree philosophically about that, Rodney, I think the, I, I'll-
Can I ask a question? And, and I, and I love the 70% preservation, sounds great. The problem is, in, in this scenario he's talking about, and we had, we had two of those neighborhoods do that. Infrastructure got in, had some lots dug, whatever, didn't pan out. Developer went belly up for about 10 years, think the Bank of Griffin owned it, you know, what's his name, came in, did what he did, got some new permits, whatever. I get it. The preservation piece doesn't happen under your current zoning, until the developer reaches a certain amount of development. So if he goes belly up, you're waiting on somebody else to come in and buy it up. We can shake our heads all we want, but that's what we've been told. When you build, you have to reach a threshold, then you gotta-
You have open space from the second you get zoned.
Open space is not-
It's in our code, though, it's protected by our code. You can't get a permit to build on it.
We did that. So that would be what I would be thinking about. Where is the real preservation?
You can't get a permit to build on the 70%, even though it's not under permanent preservation.
And it's open space until it is preserved.
There were no hamlets that went under either, the ones where-
Yeah, that's right, it is open space, that's correct.
So, are there any more questions about this zoning? I mean, to Scott's point, there seemed to be some open questions. Do we want to suggest deferring it, so that we can have those open questions answered, or what?
Just one thing for the council, was everybody in agreement with that stipulation? Since we have done a deep-
No.
-reclamation on that road, spent, I guess, a million and a half dollars on that road, should we put in some kind of bond to protect that? Because if this passes, you're gonna have a lot of heavy trucks beating up that road for a long time.
There's only one answer.
That's up to the council, takes three vote, take your vote. I'm recommending a million dollar cash bond, that can be returned to the developer after he's done developing, and our road and our infrastructure that we paid for with our tax dollars is, passes our standard. We don't have to go back after, and redo that road. Since we don't, we don't have traffic, I mean, we don't have impact fees, that's another discussion, we don't have any way to protect ourself. So, that's, Tom tells us $3 million behind every year.
So-
Need to protect that pavement.
That's, uh-
Oh, boy. Well, so, if we wanted to defer to answer all those questions, and also have somebody explain to us how something like a damage bond would work, that seems like another interesting conversation.
So if we defer to get answers on some of this stuff, and, and I think we have, or we can vote, but we have a, we, you know, we have a lot of unanswered questions here. And my, and, and I ask these, I, I sense some frustration with all of my questions, but I, I'm a district representative with a lot of people in District 3, and I don't care about future residents, because they don't exist. I care about my district residents here, and all the other people who use this, I mean, Rico Road is an artery in the city, no question. Probably three quarters of you drove on it to get here, south of the parkway. So that, so, it's an artery, and it has serious safety concerns that doesn't, doesn't feel like they've been answered. I mean, that's a real, that, I'm talking about your neighbors' lives, and that's why I'm asking all these questions about this stuff. And I'm asking them, because I don't know the answers.
A, a couple things on that, were to help on, seems like one of the big issues is the north side and those lots, and are we, is it 20 years at less? We're happy to go to zero, we're happy to agree to put it in the conservation needs-
I understand that, but I don't think that affects the traffic question at all.
The, the traffic piece, my concern is, that is an engineering piece that you're, we're gonna have to go through together, once it's zoned, where we're making sure that it works, to your point, but we've got it, we've got to get an engineer in to be able to look through that based on, on an approved plan.
I think, I think there's a possibility that having an engineer come in and spend some time with the council people that are concerned about the issue might help address that point. Again, there are obviously open questions, and, you know, it's up to you guys, right? Want to risk a vote, risk a vote. If you want to let them defer to have some more conversation, that's up to you, too, right? But I think there's some concerns that at least some of the council have, that might be addressable.
Okay.
I mean, whatever-
And, you know, maybe, maybe Mike could compile a list of these concerns that have been voiced here, and the applicant could, could address those concerns, like environmental study and so on, that could be done in the meantime.
And, and for the benefit of the other council members, right? I get, the local district councilman is the one that has the longest list of concerns, so, as the mayor facilitated the meeting, I'm trying to be responsible-
No, that's good.
-and responsive to that, and, that's only one of the five of you, right? So, you guys can tell me what you want.
I mean, we can defer to get more answers and so, I'm okay with that.
Is this something, Mike, for example, with these additional conditions, that we sort of potentially have some changes to, as well, what, what you have on the list? Would this then go back to planning, would we ask for Planning Commission to take a look at it one more time?
Yeah.
Or-
You could, or you, I mean, that's up to you guys, too.
You know, I'm just-
All right, go ahead.
But I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure how that, that's the best idea.
The-
It's up to you.
Yeah, the only, the only question is whether, where it's mentioned in the code, it talks about for another public hearing in front of Planning, so the question is whether they would need to have a, whether if you sent it to them, or whether it has to be in the context of a public hearing, or if it can be done as just a-
Give them a level of public interest, if we're deferring it, it might not be a bad idea to have a public hearing.
Yeah, so it would be, um, then the July agenda at the earliest, Planning Commission.
And Mike, would want a report from the DNR, that's how that works. You can get a report from the DNR on the status that there is bald eagles on that property.
I could certainly-
All you gotta do is make a phone call, they'll do the rest.
You certainly reach out to them.
Yeah. Give them the address, they'll, they'll show up.
Is that what?
Let me, let me, can I ask this question? If they found a bald eagle, and that was in it, like a nest, then what, what implications is that? So that makes like you can't build in that certain area? I don't even, I'm not sure. But it doesn't preclude that land from having some herds?
We'll find out, they'll tell us. We, we're just guessing.
I've, I've had one at the farm, there, there are restrictions on what you can do within a certain distance from them.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'll ask for a motion to defer-
Okay.
And, and we can do that, and talk about this list and all of that, it'll come back. Shall we move on to the next item?
Please.
Which is the, the special use permit for the gas station, and I think it might be, just as well that we also talk about the concept plan simultaneously in this process.
That's right. Two separate items, listed separately on the agenda, the special use permit has a public hearing, concept plan doesn't require a public hearing, it's on the agenda for later. This is, you all are well aware, you've seen the corner of Cascade Palmetto Highway and Campbellton Fairburn Road, which is, that one is Highway 92, Cascade Palmetto is 154, entering the intersection, but not where it runs along the, the frontage of the, of the, of the project. The proposal is for a gas station, and a couple of restaurants, and some other retail space, which would include something that would require an alcohol permit. They submitted a site plan, which is similar to the site plan that they had submitted back in 2018, when they received their rezoning, special use permit, and a variance, and an approved concept plan. The special use permit and the concept plan have expired since then, which is why everything is coming back. And, in the meantime, the city, along with the city of South Fulton, went through a planning process for that whole area, laying out the way it should be developed, was adopted by the city council. The applicant has had some public meetings, community engagement meetings, here at City Hall, two of them, and they have heard the public speak in Planning Commission, the Planning Commission hearing, and heard some of the concerns of Planning Commission members, and have made some effort to respond to those. They've submitted actually an alternative plan, which is not in front of you, I've got it rolled up over here. My opinion is, it's not quite ready, I think. It, it addresses some of the concerns, but I think there needs to be some more back and forth. Staff recommendation in here doesn't say this, but my recommendation, after having further discussion, would be for a deferral of this item. The applicant also has requested more time to reengage with the community, on some of the things that they've heard from the community. So, that's the staff recommendation, also the applicant's request right now. We can talk about some of this in more detail if you want. Staff's concerns with the existing site plan were generally related to parking and the, the arrangement of the buildings on the site. Parking, based on code, the arrangement of the buildings based on the plan that I mentioned that was adopted after the 2018 approvals. And that's part of what the applicant has attempted to address in, in, in the revised plan. Happy to pull that, that rollout, if you're interested in seeing what they've, what they've done, but I feel like it's just a first step, and it really needs more work. I've said in all the meetings, that, reminded everyone in all the meetings that you all have final approval of the site plan and the architecture at the time of building permitting. And so, those concerns can certainly be addressed at a later date, but I feel like this is something where we have an opportunity to get a better idea of, of what it's gonna be. They can have an opportunity to get back in front of the, the community, and try to address some of those concerns as well. So, while there are future opportunities to address both the architecture and the site plan, I would feel like at least the site plan, we should get nailed down. That's really a part of what's supposed to be addressed in the special use permit, anyway.
Mike, is he gonna come down here and do a presentation? Is he gonna come down here and do a presentation?
What, what they're asking for right now is more time to meet with the community?
Correct.
So, will he just come down here like during city council, and folks, and just do a presentation?
Certainly, certainly. In, in, in the way I imagine, when I mentioned my recommendation for deferral to work on the design issues, I would hope for a lot of robust back and forth, where you tell them what you do and don't like about the design, I can talk about what does and doesn't meet code, and they propose something different, maybe they have to come back a month later and bring you something new, you say, yes, we don't like, yes, we like it, no, we don't, this needs to change, that needs to change, come up with something. I'm imagining this iterative process that'll take some time. That's, but, I don't know, maybe, maybe we can get it done more quickly than that, but yes, absolutely, I'd expect them to engage, engage directly with you all on, on those, those concerns.
Can, can I ask a question? Just comes of, I, I attended the zoning meeting where this was voted down as well, and, and I kept, I kept thinking- I kept, I kept thinking of this cross, you know, this crossroads community area and future, you know, Campbellton, future plans and so on. And I was kind of struck by the idea that, that, you know, what if, if this proposal was for a nail salon? Would we, would we be considering it as a freestanding nail salon on that corner? Or would we, would we be looking at, you know, just because it's a gas station and, you know, what, in that meeting, there was the question, well, well, there's a gas station across the street as if seeing gas stations on two corners is somehow okay because every horrible meme development off a highway in the, in the country has four gas stations or two gas, whatever. It's just ridiculous. We formed a city. Now there is a gas station there and they happen to own it. So they've got it covered. And so the question then becomes what, you know, what are we doing by entertaining this freestanding thing, which has a potential as, as part of the discussion around this? And I, and I especially found the residence of Cedar Grove, both during and after the meeting, uh, to have some very, you know, lucid comments about, for example, what are you creating a nuisance by putting a gas station and a liquor store and a fast food joint on a busy corner with limited access and, and, um, and I think, uh, then my mind of course goes to the potentials for that area that were entertained when the Campbellton Crossroads stuff was, was entertained. And the, and the idea of what, like, what's a future better use for this? Why a gas station? Why not other forms of development? And then you get into the river proximity and the fact that a bunch of this site is in the, the, what is it? MRPA?
That's right.
Can you tell us what that means again?
Yes, it's Metropolitan River Protection Act.
Okay.
And it definitely governs the permeable surface and all of that.
Right.
Regulates it, yeah.
And so they're not going to have a gravel gas?
They have to meet the requirements regardless.
They have, um, in 2018, they spoke, uh, with the Murpa folks and got a reevaluation of, of the site done that gave them the numbers of, um, what it controls. It controls a number of things, but it includes the amount of land disturbance, uh, the percent of the property that could be disturbed. And then the percent of the property smaller than that, that can be, um, impervious surface. And so they got those numbers and they feel like they're in them. Now, they haven't had their formal review of the project, so they would go through that.
So they haven't had that yet?
That's right. That's right. Not until, not until we actually have an application from them to build something that would go through the Murpa review, um, at that time. But they did have the evaluation done. Now I am not sure if everything they're showing on the site plan. For example, they showed in one of the, one of the documents they submitted included the, um, uh, septic drain fields. And I'm not sure how Murpa deals with those, but I don't think that was on the plans that they originally submitted. So I don't know if that's counted as additional disturbance that they didn't figure in. So they may have to make some changes, uh, based on that and, and they may not. I, I don't, I just don't know how, how Murpa looks at those.
But in terms of our zoning, like what's the, what's the justification for this as a freestanding gas station?
So it is, uh, all the uses proposed are allowed in the historic crossroads district. Um, but, uh, a gas station in any district requires a special use permit. And so a nail salon wouldn't be coming to you for a special use permit, uh, approval. Uh, gas station being one is just one of those things that does require it. The concept plan, because it's historic crossroad, I would be bringing you a concept plan, um, uh, to review because we don't have for the historic crossroads, a, an adopted plan. And that's the model. That's what we really want. We really want a plan that the city comes up with. This is how we want the historic crossroads to be. And then if you develop within that, you don't need to come for plan approval, uh, site plan approval.
Okay.
But, but, um, but you would live within those rules that are adopted as a part of that plan. We don't have that plan, so, um, I would bring any individual application within that district to council. And then again, when the building permit comes in, you have, um, approval or no of the, both the site plan and the architecture itself. Um, so that's written into the historic crossroads, uh, district. That's true with current language, if it doesn't change, even if there were a master plan that said this is how it's going to develop and somebody wanted to develop within that. You, your review would confirm, uh, that it fits within that. And again, the architecture is pretty critical in this area. So.
Right, that architecture with a bunch of, you know, an umbrella with a bunch of gas pumps under it. I mean, we're, you, you know, if I gotta look through that to see architecture, I'm not looking at architecture.
Right, right.
The, the, but that, I, I guess because that plan, that, those crossroads plans envision, it seemed to me, a, you know, it says walkability, the, uh, and, and retail and so on. And who's walkabilitying up to this liquor store and gas station? You know, it's, it's all about driving. And so, so the, there's, it's, it kind of goes to that thing about what comp plan with zoning, like what are, are, if the plan is to make something, you know, a historic crossroads, I don't know, uh, conceptually adjacent to a historic cross, I don't know how that would work.
Well, no, that's the goal, right? To, to, to envision it as an old town center.
Right, and so.
And even, even old town centers have gas stations, right? But I mean, it just has, that's why it's one of the approved uses in the comp plan for that. That's all I'm saying.
Right, and it's, but it, but I think it bears some very careful thinking.
We agree. I'm not arguing.
And, and the residents of Cedar Grove, I thought, did a fantastic job of raising so many issues that, and, and I actually, um, it's worth, I'll just mention this, that, uh, I asked if we, if we want to hear, uh, both the police and fire chief, uh, both of them agreed to speak to us on potential public safety issues around this because the public safety angle with, with this and with all the traffic in the corner, I don't know if, I, after hearing everything at that last meeting, I went up there and, uh, saw it for myself and it's quite something to see during rush hour. And so, um, so when I think of walkability and, and, and that, that sort of cohesive neighborhood-y feel that you're looking for in a town center, I'm not thinking Mexico.
Yeah, it, walkability is going to be a challenge there. Anyway, we'll have to find a way to calm the traffic, right? The overall plan shows a roundabout there, hopefully one closer to the river. We may see some of that with the boot cart plan, but right now the traffic going through there, there's, it's hard to imagine it ever being walkable. But that is the, that is the vision. That's what we hope to achieve.
Right, and so the vision incorporates future development. And so if in the future, like what, you know, if we, anything that happens now closes a door.
What, yeah.
To the, in the future and so.
Correct. And, and one thing, the complaint I got, well, really was, it, it was a complaint, but also a good thing because the Riverland Park, you know, it's, it's beautiful. Looks great. Um, small story. I used to take drug dogs up there and train in Campbellton Park because you see needles and stuff laying around. Um, my biggest concern is that park is enjoyed by people right now. If we put a gas station right there and a massive amount of people, what's to say that, you know, you just don't walk 100 yards that way? There's the river. You know, and with the amount of police we have, I think what has changed since last time, that park wasn't there when we were talking to these people, were they?
It was.
Or maybe it was in, in the process, but you know, a lot of people brought that because you're right, you, you can sit through four or five lights. That light has to change four or five times coming from Fulton Industrial, right time of the day, get in the hill country. So, um, and right now I like that park. I think it, um, sends the kayak south. And I've been rethinking that. And maybe there is another use for that because I don't see, um, with the amount of people that'll be there, I just see that is a gem of ours that can be destroyed. Or keep Darryl and his crew over there every other day or a place eventually. You gotta, you know, crimes everywhere. But you know, when we were down to five or six officers, thank goodness Mr. Dugoo's got that back up and running. Um, I just don't know if we're prepared for that. I think like I said, that's four or five years later, got a different situation we're looking at. So I'll wait to hear from the applicant, but yeah, I have no interest in moving any of that forward. Not because I, because I've heard from the citizens and, um, they make a big point. Cochran Mill, we all know is beyond crowded. We all know it is what it is. You smell stuff through there. We deal with graffiti, whatever. You know, this park seems to be pretty pristine. So is the Riverland. So we're hoping they don't find it. Thank you.
So I guess the question is, do we want to defer this like they've asked or?
If they've asked, I, I agree.
I mean, you know, we can ask them more of these questions and make whatever.
Yeah, public input. That's what I'm waiting on.
Yeah, sounds good. All right.
Good dude.
Uh, next one is the first read of the budget. Uh, we've had our budget meetings. Dana, do you want to come up in case anybody has any questions? It's just a first read, no action, obviously. But does anybody have any questions for Dana or Robbie's obviously not here today, so?
He was on, um, but I think he's probably had to drop off. Uh, I did want to mention, um, two things, uh, not reflected in the packet that Robbie had put together is the, you'll see a change on, in the next, uh, draft or the final draft, um, ahead of our second public hearing and adoption. Um, there'll be a change in the hotel motel fund balance. Um, we have the bank accounts set up for the CVV and the DMO. In the past, we were paying their expenses out of that hotel motel fund. But we've started transferring their portion of the hotel motel taxes into their bank accounts. So you're going to see a change that will go down. Um, and then the second public hearing and adoption has been scheduled for June 30th at 6:00 PM. It's a Monday. It's the night before the regular council meeting for July.
But it's the end of the month, so it's.
Yes.
It's the very end of the cycle. It gives us the most up to date numbers the day we adopt that you can have. Any questions? Nope. All right. Next is, uh, an on-call services contract for the historic commission for consulting services. Who's going to talk to us about that with Robbie not here?
What?
Darryl, do you know about that or?
They did send a, um, they did send a, um, message in to ask for deferral to June's meeting.
Okay, sorry. That's right.
To July's meeting.
That's right. Uh, qualifying dates, Madam Clark?
Um, this is where we have to, um, set our qualifying dates for November, the November 4th election. Uh, pursuant to OCG 21-2, 131D3, each municipal superintendent shall designate the days of the qualifying period, which shall be no less than three days and no more than five days, and the days must be consecutive. The qualifying period is the third week of August. So I'm proposing qualifying dates be Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday from 8:30 to 4:30, close from 1:00 to 2:00 for lunch.
Propose three days, not five.
Yes, sir.
Want to know immediately who's running. All right. Sounds good to me.
Anybody have any questions for?
What is, I know I qualified. What are the qualifications again? Do we have to, how much is that?
It's, um, it's on page. The qualifying fee for the mayor is 144. And for the council mem, well, yeah, for the council member is 108.
Count Millet.
So we pay the fee, you fill out the paperwork. Is there anything else that you would recommend that you've seen other cities do? Should we put, should the, any candidate put up a volunteer background check so the people have a clear picture of who they're voting for?
That is not have, I have not seen that as a requirement. Um, usually people start doing the DOI, the declaration of intent. Uh, you can do one for yourself if you go to, um, just run and then one for if you're raising campaign monies. But no, sir.
No background check?
No background check.
We had to voluntarily just make that rule to do that?
I would assume so.
You want a background check?
Yeah, I'd be.
I'm not saying why are you?
But I will have a qualifying packet together during that week to give them, um, information about the city and the forms and whatnot that has to be filled out. You're welcome.
So I have a question. If we decide to up these salaries.
I can't hear you.
Oh, if we decide to up the salary, would that rate change or would it just stay what it is for now?
You cannot change the salaries during an election year.
Oh.
It would have to be done next year.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody good with that one? Uh, next up is the nuisance ordinance, uh, amendment. It, it refers to legal.
Uh, yeah, I can actually talk about that. Um, I actually do the nuisance abatement for the city as solicitor. Um, so what, what this does is just straight strengthens the code section a little bit. There was some concern about dead and dying trees and not in the right of way, but immediately adjacent to the right of way. So this just adds a couple of more sections to the, to the muni code section, um, defines nuisance, gives us kind of broad power, um, in, in terms of what we can go after, uh, in terms of nuisance abatement. Uh, addition, it allows citizens the opportunity to report, uh, nuisances that they would like to have abated. This is, this code section, um, it's, it, it will enable the city to ask someone to do something about an issue and hopefully resolve it that way without having to, you know, resort to, to legal action. But anytime you make a demand for somebody to do something, you always want to have, you know, or we're going to do X, Y and Z. This is kind of our, or we're going to do X, Y and Z, um, that we'd never, hopefully never have to go to just because we can get voluntary compliance. If we approach the citizen and say, hey, this is an issue, you know, we can go to court and, um, remove it and how do you pay for it? Or, or you can just fix it yourselves.
And if I remember correctly, that came up as I think from a public comment in one of our meetings that we talked about, right? The idea of having some, sorry, some, having some way to handle things like that, like the tree that's just outside of the right of way.
Yeah, I can, it, it come up with, with, uh, someone noticing dead, dead, the dead pines all in the city. And there was one with the right of way, wanting to know what do we do outside the right of way? It's your tree, sure. So this gives us an opportunity to go to that person and say, hey, you got dead trees on your property that's going to fall in a roadway. Uh, you need to do something about it. That's basically where it ran off to. People are dumping like loads of gravel on the side of the road and, in the right of way. And not with that, just because they're going to be doing some work. So that gives us the opportunity to say, hey, you need to move this or X, Y, Z.
Right, got it. Okay, any questions about that? All right, uh, next one is a truck route, uh, change, uh, Kevin?
Sitting back there. Um, this isn't so much a change as, um, Alex can probably testify to this too. There is a small section in our, in our, excuse me, in our city ordinance that says under the truck route that there has to be a map.
Oh.
And that you have to, the governing body has to review the truck route every, it says biannual, to which that can mean every two years or twice a year. I interpret that as every two years. We got called out on it by an attorney. So this is how we're going to.
Got it.
Yeah, fix it. So now you have a map.
And, and you've now got a calendar reminder and we'll see this every couple of years, right?
I figure we'll do this every June, every two years. So, um, yeah, there's a map.
So there's no change.
There's no changes and, but if you want to make change, right now, the only truck routes, the only approved truck routes in the city are all state routes.
Yeah.
So Highway 92, 154, 70 are the only approved truck routes. And then every offshoot of the state routes, there is myself, Officer Bridwell and Darryl's guys have gone around the city to make sure that there is signage saying no, no through trucks or the circle with the slash or, you know, whatever. So.
Mike, Mike just brought up, what about the little end of Cap's Ferry that's ours, which is where we were going to put the toll booth too, right? Um, in front of the bridge?
So if you look on the map, I have that included as part of the truck route. So yeah, okay, you're right.
I mean, no, but the.
That one small section from Campbellton Redwine to the bridge is a truck route, even though it's not.
All joking aside, one of the things that we were told by G dot is that we had to leave that open to be a truck route if we ever wanted any hope of help with repair the next time there was flooding on the Chedutu River that damaged that bridge. So, good, good. Thank you.
So, but yeah, it's on the map as a, as a truck route.
Uh, if not, then the next one is, um, we already talked about the next one. It's the, the Cedar Grove thing. I guess we'll have to handle those separately just based on where they are in the, in the, in the document when we get to them on the council. The, the deferral on those, just do those separately. All right. We have a couple of other work session items. Uh, Scott, you had a reporting and oversight of the permitting process thing that you wanted to talk about?
Well, it's, yeah, it sounds, it sounds like, uh, like, uh, Richie and I should, uh, should have coordinated on, on this. The, we were talking, we talked about this last time, the idea that, that, uh, you know, we, we issue permits, but we, but we don't have a, a coordinated.
Repository.
Well, and, and body overseeing compliance. Permit goes out, we don't, you know, we're, we have a limited view into what happens after that. And so the idea of forming not within the city and overburdening all staff, but merely burdening Mike as part of a committee to, you know, a, a committee that involves citizen volunteers like everything else here to oversee compliance with the permits. And I, it, it was suggested in the brief conversation on it last time that it might be something that could just be. on it last time that it might be something that could just be done by the, by the city. But, but I think public confidence in that process would be enhanced by having more participation.
I think.
Then.
Oh, yeah. I would suggest personally that that would be one that we'd want the city attorneys to look in from the perspective of legality in the state of Georgia. I know, for example, that they do have oversight groups like that that work in the Atlantic Ocean basins, like around Savannah and all that. But I, I've never heard of it in a town. So I, again, I'd, legal review and a recommendation maybe in the next meeting?
Well, yeah, or it could, I mean, yeah, legal review, recommendation. And if it, you know, with a, with a fallback position to.
Yeah, right.
It could be three council people who rotate in and out of that, that responsibility and are beholden to their district residents who, you know, or whatever. I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar with constituting such things legally, but it seems like something that would add public confidence to the process.
So they could, it, it, it could, the, the body itself is not so much as a problem as that if, if they're looking at permits that are already issued, you know, it, it has to do with like.
Compliance with the permits.
Well, sure. Again, but that, we're getting into punitive action again, right? So if we issue the permits in the first place, going forward and, and may, and have them, we can even do it in every permit, you know, include a compliance mechanism. But like the, the entity that if, if it is created, and again, not my final legal answer, but if the entity, if it is created, it would still be bound by the per, they can enforce that permit, the conditions in that permit to the degree the law and the permit actually allows, you know. But so.
So you might have to change some of your permit language if you're doing something different?
Exactly, yeah. So if, if this was, if this is, if the, you know, council decided to adopt something like this, we'd need to make sure that it's in the permits going forward that, that we anticipate that they're going to be enforced by a commission or.
What I was suggesting, Alexandra, what I was suggesting, they don't have any power. What they do is they have oversight. So if they see something, then they have the ability to bring it to council, give us a monthly reporting. You know, it's something I've suggested with our, with our planning commission before. Have one member stand up here each month and give us a rundown. Mike does that. But have one of them give us a rundown. What was the mood in the room? Because we, you know, a lot of people want to get an accounting of how many permits are out there. What's the time limit on, you know? We've got a little list of them, but we want to know, you know, we, we want to know this stuff. And if, if volunteers want to do that, they don't have the power to, to enforce anything. But, but they do have the ability to say, listen, according to step B, what I'm looking at, they're not following. So I want to bring this to the council and then it comes to City Hall. And if that's Mike's job, then Mike can go out there. Or if that winds up being Daryl's job. You know, there's a lot going on. It's obvious we need oversight and it can be created.
Sure.
It can be created.
My question too with Ron, we, we hired Ron, right, this year? So we've got Ron on board now. And I'm not sure, sometimes Daryl's involvement a little bit and then yourself. I think, can we look in, and Sandy, can we look and see like internally? Like, I, I don't know. I haven't seen that there, I mean, maybe there's probably some things that aren't, or miss maybe occasionally. I don't know. Plus y'all provided, like Scott had said, a list during the moratorium of all the permits that were out there. Anyway, I, I don't know if there's a way we can internally solve for that because I feel like we, with hiring of Ron, do we not, I don't know.
I don't think we can internally. I think these people are doing three or four jobs. That's why I said earlier, I said, what we need to do, and I'll read it again, is we need to form a, a committee that oversees the permits that are passed out in this town. The benefits of that are very simple. Number one, it ensures compliance, just like a deed. Somebody has the ability to read the permit, see what A, B, C, and D says. If they're complying, great. You'll never hear from us. If they're not, we need to know. If there's anything our staff does, I think they all do two or three jobs. So I, it's not going to be solved internally. Enforce zoning, preservation, environmental values. Make sure that these reports are given to us, these EPA reports. So we don't have sewers bubbling. So we know where rainwater's going. You know, there's a lot going on right now. Oversee the proper recording of the permits. So when somebody does an open records request, they come up here, they get handed what they ask for. It's very simple. Facilitate reporting to the public. That way you don't have to call me. We can report that every two or three months. Somebody wants to know, you know what the biggest question is people give me? How does something as big as some of these developments wind up, you guys wind up voting on something like that in 90 days? And to build a stadium, they talk about that for years. You know, that's a good question. And people are paying attention now. Things should go step by step. Anyway, that's another subject. And enable public discourse. We want to hear from everybody. We're forgetting that in our town, we still have the ability to control our growth if we monitor it. If we don't, we won't. And that committee would be a huge help to Mike. Last I checked with Mr. Winlet, he's got more than enough on his table. Last I checked, this guy right here, Mr. Nigron, he is building. So, you know, he probably doesn't need people to call him, you know? So, yeah. Having oversight to make sure people are doing their jobs correctly is not a bad thing. Because what we're talking about, you're talking about putting 70, 80,000 people in this city with a couple of permits?
Doing jobs correctly is Robbie's, our city manager's job, really, I believe.
Well, maybe the kind of thing too.
Well, we create jobs. That's one we definitely need to create or we need to create.
I don't know. I think we need to evaluate internally, we can actually handle that before we consider.
So, so the city's power to, you know, oversee and say, hey, this is what's happening is, is generally broader than city's power to like enforce an existing permit and say, you know, anytime you're taking punitive actions, you're getting into like people's rights. What, what you're talking about, Council Schmidt, is, is basically all just reporting, you know?
Correct. And when you see a problem, you report it and we know who to go to. Mike Morton's got 850 roles in his office. He ain't got time to ride around and do this. Daryl doesn't neither. But we have a lot of committed people in this city who have a skill set, who are geniuses in this area, who would be glad to volunteer.
Sure.
And do that. Because they want to preserve this place.
Might be good to hire them as employees then, right? Because that's a more direct route to that. So that's a, a thing to talk about. Like, let us know for the next meeting what the abilities are for the city. And we can maybe also talk through what the actual needs are and what the best way to cover them is.
Okay.
Um, next one. The, you had a, a process issue conversation that, that has been ongoing.
Okay, so, so this, this item, and in light of the, some interactions with my colleagues last time, I, what I, what I want to do is, I, I shared with all of you, thanks to Diane, our, our city clerk, giving each of you a copy of what should, what is essentially a, a set of recommendations that, that city council and, and I would think for this probably is the Planning and Zoning Commission too. I don't know.
At least on the ones that are zoning issues perhaps, yeah.
But it, but it has to do with procurement and code amendment recommendations. And so what I want to do is put this, put this forward rather than, you know, here we are at this late time and everybody here for the meeting, rather than, rather than walk through 90 minutes of this, what I'd like to do is, is for us to agree on an agenda item in the work session for next time with a.
Well, in time for staff to respond and all that.
Right, so, so staff can look at it and, and so we can all look at it.
Yeah.
And then kind of in the spirit of the thing about doing legislative tracking, the zoning, you know, the thing that this is codifying is the first.
Right.
But it goes to, and, and we should all, if I can add, look at the one that Camille circulated last time and, and agree to have a discussion and potential adoption of this, which would have us then recommending that the staff come up with the legal.
Makes sense. And, and, and thank goodness, we got through the other thing today, right? So we'll have time at the next, you know, if we want to maybe add an hour before or whatever to go through this at that level of detail.
And, and, and what I'd, I'd like it to be understood that this is the, that this is the work product of the work done during the moratorium to identify all of this stuff. But we, it behooves us to then start acting on it. As, as I pointed out last time, we haven't done anything. Well, you know, here's a, here's a start. And, and so I'd like us to agree to do that.
And if, if anybody else has input that they want to have in that conversation.
Or items, yes.
That's one of my points, yeah.
Camille did the first one. I'm doing the second one. And.
You know, let's, let's add that in that. And we'll talk about how much extra time we think that might need and just maybe do one of those early starts again. All right.
Great.
And that's it for this. Let us reconvene as close to six as we can.
There, uh, I have extra copies of it if anybody didn't get it or would like.
I got it, thanks.
Can you put one in the public record for the meeting so that we?